We'll call this meeting to order. Our first presentation will be for the county manager recruitment and Mr. Higginbottom.
Commissioners, thanks for the time again this afternoon. Reintroduce you W.D. Higginbottom from Mercer Group. He's going to share with you a little bit of the consensus that he heard in your individual interviews and then share with a couple, three issues we need to get resolved so we can move the advertisement forward on this position. Thank you. W.D.
See if I can do this without knocking everything off the counter here. Mr. Chair, for the record, Commissioners, I'm W.D. Higginbottom with the Mercer Group. I sent an email to all of you yesterday touching on some of the things that we want to talk about a little bit today and get a consensus from you where we're going to go from here. This, all of you, generally speaking, we've moved forward. We've got perhaps, I don't know, most of our job announcements finished, but there's some issues that we had some, not disagreements, but some positions that I need some clarification from you. It wasn't necessarily unanimous decision from our majority from you as to what you would like. Some of the issues were the educational achievements, whether it would be a master's degree, certainly a bachelor's degree, but whether it be a master's degree also. There was some discussion about private sector experience, a number of years. The issue was not, and I don't want to use the word issue and it's not for me to say, but one thing I want to clarify with you is there was some discussion about whether the educational requirements and the private sector experience should be a number of years and whether they should be preferred or required. The issue with, and I've spoken with some of you about that, the issue with having it preferred versus required or vice versa. If we have, for example, a number of years required for public sector experience and/or private sector experience, you do raise, again with the requirements, and the more we require, without any exceptions, the less, the fewer responses we're going to have. And I'm not suggesting that quantity is necessarily what we want. Of course, we want quality. But if we, for example, say there's 10 years experience required in either public or private sector, and I'm not picking one or the other. If you say it's required and someone has nine years and they're an excellent candidate, you're not given the opportunity to see that candidate. Every applicant, everything we receive is going to be public information. As candidates may not want to go public if they think that, well, they're not quite meeting the qualifications and they're going to be excluded or not have the opportunity to come before you for a decision. So those are some of the things I would like to see from you. We wanted, I want to get some clarification on what we will do in terms of advertising, salary, whether it's a salary range. The job announcement I presented as an initial draft to you showed the current salary of the county manager and the, and that just for the candidates to see what you're paying now for your county manager. I suggested in the announcement that it would be market competitive, which means you would negotiate. I'm not suggesting that candidates that are way beyond that, and I don't want to try to define that right now, but for example, if someone is demanding $250 a year, and I'm just picking a number, that may be way beyond what you would consider, and I certainly don't want to bring a candidate like that to you. But if we have some idea of what you're looking for, the candidates will know that too, and I can discuss it with them as well, and I will. I want to talk a little bit about the closing date. We had suggested up to now a closing date of June the 2nd. I would like to suggest this evening, we might want to talk about June the 9th because you're, you're out on, for the month of June, that's my understanding. If we have a closing date on June the 9th, I would have material to you probably within 10 days of that date, next week usually sometime. You could have the materials of the semifinalists, whether it's 8, 10, or 12, whatever it may be, and again, there's no magic to the number. I know you wanted at least eight. Have that material to you. You're not going to be meeting in June, but you could at least have the material to review it for a couple of weeks and then at some time, early in July possibly, we can meet, perhaps as we're meeting today, in a workshop environment to narrow down the ones you want to interview. But, so I would suggest a closing date of June the 9th instead of June the 2nd. It'll keep the semifinalists from waiting too long after the closing date. The longer we wait to bring it to closure, if you will, or to at least to interview, the higher the probability of losing quality candidates. A good candidate may be looking in more than one place and we don't want to keep them waiting. We might lose them. So the sooner we move after the closing date, the better. That's why I would suggest June the 9th for the closing date. Mr. Chair, I think that's all I really had to deal with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Higginbottom.
Yes, sir.
Board comments? Thoughts?
I'll start with the easy one. June the 9th is amenable to me. Pushing it back the week, I think that would meet my needs.
I agree though.
Okay, you're good for June 9th. Okay, how about requirements that Mr. Higginbottom brought up?
Do you want to start with the education? I, I don't know, I put down master's degree or higher from a regionally accredited university. I'm not stuck on a master's degree. I just wanted to make sure, in the newspaper article, it was mentioned a bachelor's degree in public administration, and I didn't want to be that specific. So if you had a bachelor's degree in nuclear physics, I certainly didn't want that to knock you out. I just randomly put in masters. I don't know if anyone else did, but you did as well.
Yeah, I believe a master's degree is required. I think that's for this position with 20, over 2,000 employees and all various operations and the different funding sources, I think a master's degree should be required.
I would agree with that. I mean, we're not going to be specific as to what that master's degree is in because someone could have one in public administration, someone could have one in business management.
Right.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Ms. Pritchett, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm good with that also. Is that what, but you prefaced this a minute ago thinking it might reduce some candidates you thought might be worthy. Is that what you were saying?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, I didn't, I wasn't suggesting there was anything wrong with the masters. I didn't hear that from a majority of you, and I just wanted to make certain it wasn't going to be an issue. I didn't want to provide the draft document, send it to you, and then all of a sudden there was a disagreement. So the masters, just fine. I heard from you very clearly.
My thoughts on it, I don't want to be restrictive in any one area because somebody that has more experience, suppose we have somebody that has a master's degree but has five years' experience versus somebody that has 15 years' experience without a master's degree. I think I'd be, I'd be on the side of the guy with 15 or the girl with 15 years' experience. To me, that would be more prevalent than, than the education.
I think that if someone is in this leadership role, they're going to take the extra effort and go get a master's degree. I believe that's important. Like I said, I mean, this is a huge operation and it's, I believe a master's degree should be required. It's just, it's so many different facets to it, but also, I mean, it also shows a commitment to it, to understanding and work.
Roger. You're in this business, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Chair, let me answer it this way. I understand what you're saying. The, a lot of situations they're going to say are an equivalent combination, or they would say a master's degree preferred. The discipline is not important, and I, we can get away from that. Doesn't have to be public administration or business administration, doesn't have to be history. Those aren't the issues, and that wasn't the issue when I spoke with any of you. If we have a candidate, and I'm going to make some judgment calls too when I'm looking at the resumes. If you tell me that you want a requirement of a master's degree, bachelor and a master's degree, those are the things that we're going to publish and we'll be looking for. We will get some candidates that may not have that. They will make an application. They may be close to it and they may choose to send a resume anyway. And there may be someone I know that's out there that I think is a good candidate. You're not going to not be able to see them. They may not be among the eight semifinalists, but I may have a second tier, and I'm not saying I will, but I may have a second tier that would prevent, at least call attention to some other candidates that I think might be someone you want to take a look at. The final call will be yours.
Well, along with that thinking, I would, I like the wording, master's degree preferred. Try that on for size, guys, because if you're saying master's degree preferred, we're telling them, the candidates, that we would like to see a master's degree. But I don't want somebody that's got a lot of experience that would be a crackerjack person to say, well, you know, I'm not going to submit an application because I don't, I don't hit that qualification. But if it's preferred, that person may just step up and say, you know what, I don't have it, but it's only preferred. Let me throw my hat into the ring and see how I size up with everybody else.
And Mr. Chair, that will happen. I can assure you that will happen, good or bad, that will happen. Again, if it's required and if someone doesn't happen, have it, and they don't necessarily want to go public if they don't have it. You know, everything, every document I receive is public. We don't necessarily get daily requirements for, to review the records by the media, but nonetheless, it is something that's public and if, and if they feel like they don't have a chance because it's required, they may not respond.
That's my point. So I'll leave it up to the other Commissioners. That's my, that's my two cents worth.
See, my thinking, my thinking is if they have all this experience and they've been at, say, in government or a deputy or a manager somewhere for 10 years, why wouldn't they attain the master's degree? I mean, you're, you're at an executive level, you're managing thousands of employees. I mean, I think that, I think that where we, where we're giving lenience is on what that master's degree is. You know, that's, that's the lenience that we're giving because perhaps they have a degree in, you know, what you said, history, or he has, you know, something else, or business or public administration, but I think master's degree, that's, that's just where I stand. I think they should have a master's degree.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I'm probably, if you give them to me, I'm probably going to raise to the top all the ones with the master's degree myself. So I, I think unless there's any.
Good with that too.
I have a requirement.
Okay, so it's make it a requirement.
And it's got, not to be a stickler, but it's got to be a regionally accredited university.
Oh, yeah. It won't be a diploma.
Yes, yeah, we don't need any, I'm not saying that Catfish Tech's a bad place to go to school, but it's better than Potomac U, so let's.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, what's your next request?
The, the next issue was private sector experience, and it was essentially the same issue, preferred number of years versus required. I've had discussion whether it should be 10 years or five years or seven. It's not so much the number of years as it is the requirement that they have that number of years, public or private sector. If, you know, someone that's got two years' experience in either public or private may not be desirable anyway, but whatever it may be, if you're going to put seven years preferred or 10 years preferred, I think we would do better to have it preferred rather than required, but that's your call. I, I do know, and I have no crystal ball here, but I do know that the higher, the more difficult it is by raising the bar of what's required, the fewer responses we're going to get.
Sure, that makes sense. Pleasure the board.
I, sorry.
Let's start at this end. Commissioner Zanardi.
I would just say preferred. I mean, ideally, I don't think you're going to bring us somebody with no experience, somebody who's fresh out of, you know, college, so I.
Were we speaking about experience in general or private sector?
Private sector experience, because I think, you know, if, if someone rises to the top and they've got a master's degree or even a PhD in, in public administration, I would hate to turn them down because they only have four or five years in the private sector if we're requiring 10 or more.
So are you saying?
We could say preferred.
Is some, some private sector experience preferred?
Preferred. That would be my input.
Okay.
I'm probably the same, and as we're reading through them again, you know, these are probably things that are going to determine who I like the most reading through them. I'm going to be looking for the more experienced ones. I'm guessing you're not going to give us 80 applicants with no experience, so I, I'm fine with preferred also.
Mr. Barfield.
I have mixed emotions about the, you know, I call it industry experience, but I don't think it's a problem if we, if it's included into the experience. I mean, I prefer, I don't know if preferred's okay, but I wouldn't want to require it because there's a lot to this.
Commissioner Tobias.
Cards on the table, I was the one that, that put it as a requirement, that I wanted 10 years. I wasn't necessarily stuck on 10 years, but it looks like I don't have the support to go with that, so to back it down definitely to, if we want to do industry experience as, as preferred, do we want to put a year to that as well? Or do we just generically want to say it's, I hope you worked at McDonald's for, when you were as a 16-year-old?
Private industry experience, that's all.
Or Burger King.
Or Burger King, yeah, I don't want to single out.
Don't single out McDonald's.
Mr. Chair, and I, you know, those are things that I would, I don't like to use this word, you trusted me, the judgment, when I see these things, whether we have significant experience in the public sector, there's significant experience in an industry that is comparable in size and not a fast food organization. I'm glad I heard that coming because I, certainly not, if someone happens to be a manager in a fast food organization for 10 years, I don't think that that would measure up to being, fit in the category of managing your county. So those are the things that I will be screening through, but what I wanted to hear from you is whether you wanted private sector experience, and I will go after that, and if so many years would be preferred, and I'll pick a number and then we can go for that, but I think it's got to be a comparable business.
I also, I mean, they have to be able to show that they've led a comparable size organization, diverse organization. You're talking also budget size, all those type things too.
Yes, sir. And we're going to get some owner, owner slash CEOs for organizations, but if they're not comparable in size and they, even within the public sector, if they're not comparable in size, it doesn't matter how many years they have, it's not going to qualify them to come forward and be your manager, so.
So the wording would be some private sector service preferred?
Yes, sir, I'll, I can, of course, what I'm going to, I'm going to give you the draft for your final approval, is that I'm not going to walk away tonight and then write this up and then start publishing. You're going to see what, what I've taken from this meeting this evening, but I would suggest something that seven plus years in the public sector, perhaps, and/or including five years in the private sector, again, preferred, and I will use the word, the verbiage that, you know, organization comparable in size to Brevard County with the public sector and then the private sector. I'll have to pick some words. There's not too many organizations that's going to have a billion-dollar budget and 3,000 employees, including your constitutional offices, that is going to attract somebody, a CEO, that want to be, that wants to be manager of Brevard County. I think we all know that someone that's in an organization of that size, they're going to have stock options and they're going to have serious bonuses at the end of the year, so there's some financial rewards that are in the private sector that aren't offered in the public sector. But there are some candidates that may say, this is what I want to do. I have a calling for that and this is what I want to do, and I do run across that from time to time in other recruitments where you have to reach into the private sector to find an adequate candidate, so. I'll pick, I'll, I'll pick the words I think that you're looking for, so.
Mr. Whitten, how much private sector experience do you have?
Probably a day or two with a win.
Well, that, that's my point. I don't want to exclude a Stockton Whitten. That's, that's what my fear is. I don't, I don't want to put some kind of restriction on there that would exclude somebody with his talent. So I understand the point and the purpose of talking about private sector, but I don't want to put, personally, I don't want to put numbers on there that would scare Stockton Whitten away because he says, well, I don't have two years. So I don't like the idea of years. I like the idea of putting, putting just public service versus private, or private sector experience preferred or, you know, or some time in the private sector preferred but not required, something in that. I don't want to restrict a Stockton Whitten.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners understand that, that's not a problem at all, so I, private sector experience, you know, to complement the public sector experience will certainly be.
There you go. That, that would be good. Anything else?
One thing, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Higginbottom, you, you mentioned public service experience, you said seven years. I, I want to be very, you know, if we are going to mention years, seven years in public service and years in management of public service are completely different. So I would much rather see someone, and what I put down, and I was very clear, I provided you with a copy of it, I would much rather have someone with two years of management experience than someone with 15 years of, you know, sub-management experience come in. So please, when you do write it, be extremely clear that, you know, that management of some time or another than just flat public service experience.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, you're absolutely correct. I'm sorry, sometimes I get so close to the trees, I don't see the forest here, but I do know that when I'm talking about experience, it's going to be in a, in an organization, they got a top end of an organization comparable in size. I think, Commissioner Tobias, you had suggested an organization with at least $100 million budget, for example, and that would be, that would be pretty small. I would be looking at something even larger than that. I don't mind putting something like that in there. I'll use a large organization comparable in size, and then the candidate will pick that. And when I get their responses, if they're, they figure an organization with 30,000 population and a $40 million budget is comparable, it's not, and I know that. So I, you're not going to see those candidates, so. You might see them in, with the group of all of them, but you won't see them in the semifinalist list.
And one other, one other thing, Commissioner Smith mentioned, I think, when we, when we were talking about, you said the flavor of Brevard County. Is there, is there a way that, you know, that we can put that in the, you know, in the, in the qualification or minimum requirements? How would you put that, you know, what would the syntax of addiction be if, by having knowledge of Brevard County, or how could we do that?
One of the things that was discussed, and I'm completely understand that, is familiarity with Brevard County, and the issues that this county is facing, not only generic issues, if you will, because it's a coastal community, but you have some unique opportunities here that you will be looking for, economic development, for example, that was something that came out of at least one of the discussions I had with you. That is, that is always an issue in a county of this size. Economic development, redevelopment, I understand about tax increment, financing, and they would, they would need to know that. Be familiar with not only Brevard County, but some of the unique, unique aspects of Brevard County, because if it's a coastal community, someone in Volusia County would certainly be familiar enough with Brevard County. Someone in Corpus Christi, Texas, or Galveston, or San Diego may not be that familiar with Brevard County, but they're coastal where they are, and they may have some experiences that are very similar to what you're looking for here in Brevard County. I will see those type of things as well. But someone that's in Nebraska, and I shouldn't say that, but I guess I don't want to say Ohio State either.
Don't go there.
But there are some issues that candidates will have dealt with that don't relate to your issues at all.
Well, one of the things I was, I was getting at was not just from a problematic standpoint with, of situations that might be unique here, but some of the enticements being, for example, where, what do we call it, a quintimodal? We have spaceport, we have airports, we have trains, we have planes and cars, and so that makes us unique. Those kinds of things make us unique, and I think that would be a draw and an attraction for somebody that has a lot of talent, that, that wants a challenge.
Commissioners, we're putting a brochure together that captures all of that, similar to what we did for the parks director and the IT director.
Perfect.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, that's exactly what I was going to say, that the HR department is putting together the brochure, and it's, it's outstanding, but what I'm talking about here is just the advertising and where we advertise, some of the number, the words that we can put might be limited to 300 words, so there's, there's not a lot. But the link that I give them is going to send them to additional information like the brochure and an expanded description of Brevard County. The good candidates are going to know a lot about this county before I even get a chance to screen them. If they haven't studied about Brevard County and know some of your issues and watched some of your archives and your meetings, I'll be very disappointed. Good candidates will do that.
Mr. Tobias.
Sorry, another, and we mentioned, I think you'd gotten the question about advertising the New York Times or something, and you were, you had a great response. It's $10,000 they probably would receive.
Well, it's expensive and it's not cost effective.
I get it. My question would be, for the person that doesn't come from the traditional bureaucratic model and who would not check the publications that are, you know, traditionally read by, by those individuals, do we have it in any other generic online space or publication where someone from industry might read, whether it's, I don't know what people use these days, monster.com or Indeed or any of these other places?
The, Mr. Chair, I, I don't advertise, we don't advertise Indeed, although Indeed will pick up our announcements quite often and they'll advertise, and we're typically flooded with resumes, and, I mean, lots, hundreds of resumes. But in answer to your question, unlike ICMA, which is an industry-wide advertiser for city and county managers internationally, if I were to want to go into the private sector and find an advertisement for a CEO, I would typically be looking for a CEO in a particular industry, whether it's solid waste or manufacturing of unique products or whatever. There's not a publication that I can go to that's going to go to, I'm sure there must be, I shouldn't make a statement, there's not such a thing, but there's nothing that comes to mind, a publication that is all CEOs everywhere going to subscribe to this publication, much like the public sector county and city managers and others, not just, just the managers. There's over 10,000 members of ICMA. I don't think we have another publication. We've got things like, if I'm doing a city attorney, we've got attorney publications, but CEO for which industry, certainly, well, anyway, no, sir, there's not.
So you need any more direction from us?
One other issue. We had talked about the current salary of your current manager. What I'd suggested initially was the salary of the current manager is, I think it's $188,000, and, but the successful candidate or the commission is considering a market competitive salary. Now, what does that say? If someone is looking for more than that within reason, and it's difficult for me to define what reason is now, but certainly no more than 15 to 20%, I would think, if they're, they are an outstanding candidate, I might bring them forward to you, and if you want to negotiate that or think that that person would be worth perhaps more, that's going to be your call. If someone is in the, and I picked the number earlier, in the 250,000 or greater, and they want that and more, it's not likely, from the discussions I've had with you, it's not likely that that candidate is going to find a home here in Brevard County, so.
That would be true.
So that, with that being in mind, do we want a salary range or is it, as I have it now, is that satisfactory? The current salary is $188,000 annually, am I correct on that? And the, but the successful candidate or the commission is committed to. And the, but the successful candidate or the commission is committed to a market competitive salary, and that just says you're willing to negotiate, and it's going to, the word is reason, within reason. I won't say that, but that's the message to the, the smart candidate.
Thoughts? You guys have any thoughts?
That works.
I'm fine with my work. I think it's good.
Okay.
And again, I know we discussed during our interview that we, and you made it very clear that you were going to wash out the candidates that were just basically looking to retire here.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that goes without saying. It's, you know, we live in a wonderful state. I mean, Brevard County is a wonderful place to come to, and we're going to get a lot of folks that, of course, we're getting away from the snow right now, but depending on the time of the year, we're going to get a lot of candidates that want to come south, and, and I will screen out, and I've been doing this long enough, and I understand when somebody is looking for, in this case, Brevard County, pay their relocation here to retire, that's not what you're looking for. Someone is going to come here, this may be their terminal position, but, I don't like that word either. But it's where they want to continue their career, and they may be here for a decade or more, that would be what they'd be talking about. Now, whether you're going to want them to hear that long, or whether in fact it's going to work out, that's another issue. But they're not coming here to retire, and I will screen those out. I, I don't miss those very often. In fact, I haven't missed one yet, so.
Do you guys think that it would be too much to put, you know, I know we didn't talk about actual amount of time, but, you know, I know that, you know, you didn't tell me what you discussed with the other commissioners, but I know the public-private sector experience was, seemed to be a favorable thing that we talked about last time, so I don't know how you guys feel about that. You know, I don't, I don't want to say preferred necessarily, unless the commission agrees, of course, but, you know, encouraged, or?
With regard to?
With regard to requirements.
Total experience?
Yeah. I like the idea of someone having worked in the private sector before staying in government. Of course, present company accepted, but, you know, with some of the mindset.
I thought we already covered that, didn't we?
Well, and, you know, and I think private sector experience, management of private sector would be a plus. We can use something like that. Not that, you know, so many years are preferred, but private sector experience is a plus, and, and it certainly is, there's no question about it. I, I say that personally. I, I mean, the first city I entered was lucky, because I came out of the private sector, so.
Or private sector service could be a plus.
Yes.
It's all in the wording.
And why would that won't discourage an applicant that you're going to get the opportunity to then evaluate?
Right. That's what we really, that's what we're looking for. We want, we want, we want the ability to make those decisions.
Right.
Yes, and that's what I want is, I don't want to start scratching candidates because they didn't meet a certain level.
Exactly.
And being close doesn't count if it's required, but if it's, if it's a plus, if it's preferred, close does count, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else?
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimbler.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move into our budget presentations. Sheriff's offices first, and we see our distinguished sheriff here.
Morning, members of the commission. Good afternoon, I should say.
I was going to say, it's morning somewhere, but not here.
I would, if you will permit me, I'd like to make two points about the last presentation. One, I feel confident in telling you that between Milo Zanka and I, we know every fast food manager in Brevard County, and none of them are putting in. So Milo, do you concur with that?
Appreciate that way, thank you.
Secondly, I was thinking that perhaps what would be acceptable is either a master's degree from an accredited university, or half a semester at the University of Florida, which, I think we're going to get shade. First of all, thank you guys for having us today, and we'll jump right into our budget presentation. I have with me today our CFO, Greg Pelham, who will present to you, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, we'll run through our presentation outline. We're going to go over the programs with services within our agency. We'll discuss the funding sources and the operational expenditures, and then we'll close out with some of our critical needs that we're doing our best to try and address. Our budgetary program is broken down into five programs and services. Law enforcement, the county jail complex, judicial operations, which is the courthouses, animal services, our contracted services, and our law enforcement MSTU. As you can see on this chart, this breaks down the revenues that we have within the agency. 75% of the revenues that we receive are a transfer from the general fund, $92 million. The next largest is the law enforcement MSTU taxes, which are almost $17 million. Our intergovernmental revenues, those are grants that we receive from FDLE and the federal government. Charges for services of 9.8 million. The lion's share of that is the contract we have with Port Canaveral to provide law enforcement and seaport security services, and the city of Cape Canaveral to provide law enforcement services to the city. Our fines and forfeits, those are the forfeitures that are seized under the Florida Contraband Act. And miscellaneous revenue is our telephone commission fees and those interest and those type of things. And then our balance forward is the money that rolls forward each year in our law enforcement Put together this slide here to show you what the breakout of the revenues on the individual program is. You can see on the law enforcement side of the equation, $41.3 million transfer from the general fund to operate our countywide law enforcement operations, criminal investigations, aviation, SWAT, those types of ideas. County jail, that's for operating the county jail for the board. Judicial operations, providing all of the court deputies at all of the courthouses is also a general fund transfer, too. The next two, our contracted services and our law enforcement MSTU, that you'll see that there's no general fund dollars there. The contracted services are 100% funded by the city of Cape Canaveral and Port Canaveral, so no general fund dollars are advenable, taxes are going to that. And then our law enforcement MSTU. The law enforcement MSTU is a mileage rate that is set up, that is placed on the unincorporated area of the county specifically for law enforcement purposes. There are three cities that do participate, Palm Shores, Grant Valkaria, and Malabar. So they have passed ordinances to be included into law enforcement MSTU, and we provide law enforcement services to them as part of that. That is how our $123 million budget breaks out.
All right. I think just, I think Greg, you may have mentioned this, and I missed it, but the numbers you're seeing in front of you represents our '16, '17 budget, not our forthcoming budget that has not been prepared.
That is correct, sir. Our next slide, it breaks down our expenditures for you. $97.9 million is compensation and benefits. Almost 80% of our budget is just people. The deputies out on the road, the investigators, the people in the jail, the people in the courthouses, animal services. So operating expenses, 18%, 22.2 million. So it's not the large share that it, most people think it is. The transfers, I will point out to that, that is transfers to the property appraiser and the tax collector for the services they provide related to the law enforcement MSTU, and it also includes money that is transferred back to the Board of County Commissioners for debt payments that I'll address in a few minutes. Wanted to break down into our major categories, our $22 million in operating expenses. You can see the largest expense that we have is at the county jail to provide inmate medical services. We're required to provide medical services to them. We have a contract with Armor Medical Services that they staff and house the infirmary at the jail, and then we also have an agreement for reimbursement of any procedures that are performed off-site at hospitals and doctors' offices that inmates are taken to. Fuel, deputies are out patrolling in their vehicles, so we need to have gas in them. On our insurance, insurance is our professional liability insurance that we have to carry on every person in the agency that's performing law enforcement functions. Our general liability, our aviation liability insurance. So that, next one is inmate food services, $1.8 million. We're feeding the inmates, three square meals a day, and this is what it costs us. One thing that I will point out, and the sheriff will may want to chime in on this, is that we do grow a lot of food down at the jail farm there on 95. That helps offset this cost and keep it down. Vehicle repairs and maintenance. Communications, communications are the mobile data terminals in the deputy's car, laptops, it's how they communicate and calls are dispatched. Contract services, polygraph services for every person that applies, they have to go through a background check, that includes a polygraph, a psych test, a drug test, so we have those. It also includes the 800 megahertz radio that the county operates, and we contribute money to that for the maintenance of that system. Our maintenance agreements, two big ones here, our CAD records management, jail management system, and the other one just went flying out of my head. Our emergency animal care, vets at the animals shelters, and our judicial process servers. Deputy outfitting, this is the uniforms, handcuffs, batons, flashlights, all of the things that we provide to the deputies so they can do their job. The $418,000 in animal services, pet food, janitorial supplies, pharmaceuticals for the surgeries, and those type of things that are provided on the animals that are in the Operating leases, that's another big one, our copiers, a couple other ones of that one. The hangars that the, we have out at Merritt Island Airport for the aviation unit. The special investigations building that we have. Inmate supplies, the uniforms, the wristbands that we have on all the inmates, those wristbands allow us to know who can be in what pod. We have a category of inmates where they can't be in the same place at the same time, so that helps us distribute who they are. The shoes that they wear, I think as the sheriff pointed out in a previous meeting, we don't provide them underwear, so that's not included, and we don't provide them with socks. The TSA K-9 grant, we have an agreement with Port Canaveral in TSA. TSA provides us with a K-9, and they reimburse us $50,000 a year per TSA K-19. We currently have five. We expect to receive two more in the next year. They're completely housed out at Port Canaveral, and they're used in the cruise terminals and around the cruise ships. Prisoner transportation services, we have a contract to, with a company to provide prisoner transportation services from our jail to other counties and out of state. If somebody has picked up on a warrant out in Montana, we can call this company, they will go out to Montana and pick them up and bring them back. That's done in conjunction with the state attorney's office. Vehicle equipment, radios, cages that go in the back of the cars, the gun vaults to lock up the guns, and those types of things are included in that. Our legal fees, those are kind of self-explanatory. Utilities, our criminal investigative building, we do all of the utilities on that building. That was part of the agreement when the county purchased that for us, as part of us getting into that building. We also have the jail farm, the aviation hangar out on Merritt Island, the Camp Chance out in Westport-St. John. Law enforcement training, this is all of the money that we receive back from the state on the $2 and $2.50 surcharge that is placed on every traffic citation issued in Brevard County. Anything that's written in the unincorporated area comes back to the agency, and per state statute, it can only be used for training of law enforcement purposes. Repairs and maintenance are repairs on our facilities and other equipment that we have, and ammunition. Yes, they still require us to buy bullets. On our capital program, lion's share of our capital is our vehicles. Vehicle is the number one piece of equipment that a deputy needs to be able to do his job. Our computer replacement of $328,000, we rotate our laptops out that the deputies use every five years. Body armor, still need to buy them body armor, unfortunately. Firearms, we have a program with one of the local vendors here that we can exchange out our guns every five years, and they will give us a brand new one to replace it at a deep discounted price, it's like $119 per. Bomb suit, unfortunately, we still have those threats, too, so we, those bomb suits are only warranted for five years, so we try and replace those every five years also. And then our K-9 dogs. We have 30 K-9s in the agency, 12 on the jail side, and 18 on the law enforcement side, narcotic dogs, bomb dogs, apprehension dogs. Unfortunately, they get hurt, they get older, so we have to retire them and replace those on a regular basis also.
Greg, could you go back to the bomb suit?
Yes.
You said they're guaranteed for five years. Do they get threat worn? How does a bomb suit wear out? I mean, if a, if a bomb suit can take the pressure of a bomb, it seems to me it's a little different than a shirt that wears out, so could you explain that?
I can, the ballistic panels, heat, exposure to the environment, everything like that takes its toll on them, just like it does on the body armor that our deputies wear. So sweat, everything else adds to it, and so the companies that manufacture them, test them at different intervals, not, not ours, but before they market them, they test them, and their guarantee is what they believe is the safest value of the suit, is at that five-year mark.
I'm just curious. This next chart is one that, I'm sorry, that number on the chart up there should be 12739 in red.
What's its value?
Yes. This is a comparison to our surrounding counties, the ones immediately around us, and we like to compare ourselves to how we're doing to them. And you can see that at the end of 2016, on a per capita basis, lowest sheriff's office for law enforcement in the east-central Florida area.
Well, that's impressive.
This one on the jail, this is the same graph, but this is just specifically for jail operations. The number that should be there in red for value is $75.49. Again, we're the lowest operating on a per capita basis sheriff's office in the east-central Florida area. One thing that I do want to point out is just in the last two years, we moved in front of Polk County in this particular graph. The good thing about that is Polk County gets $2 to $3 million a year from the federal government for housing federal prisoners, and we're still beating them, and we do not do that, and we do not get that funding.
As does Seminole County. Seminole County houses federal prisoners as well and gets the per diem cost back on it, and we're still coming in under both of them.
Some interesting information that we came across on, a person that provided to us, the Office of Demographic and Economic Research up at the University of Florida did a study and found out that in Brevard County, 26% of the total budget, and this was for fiscal year 14, goes towards public safety expenditures, which was 45th out of the 67 counties. And additionally, we were 58th out of 67 on a per capita basis for public safety expenditures. I will point out, public safety expenditures in this detail includes the emergency medical operations and fire rescue, so. At the agency, we're faced with three critical needs, one of those being our staffing, also our competitive starting salary for our deputies and our equipment and our facilities. The board has a county comprehensive plan in place that states that there should be two deputies per 1,000 residents. In the unincorporate, unincorporated area right now, the population is just over 230,000, which based on the county comp plan, there would be 462 road patrol deputies. We currently have 402, so we're 60 deputies short of meeting that comprehensive plan.
And we're budgeted for 402.
Correct. And you can see that in fiscal year 2020, the population is estimated in the unincorporated area to grow to 240,000, which would be an additional 20. area to grow to 240,000, which would be an additional 20 deputies that would be needed at that point in time. One of the issues with that is it takes about $125,000 per brand-new position. The salary and benefits for an entry-level deputy is $63,000. The vehicle and the associated equipment to outfit that brand-new vehicle for that deputy is $45,000. And then the other equipment to outfit the deputy, gun, uniform and that, is $17,000. On our salary, this graph shows all of the local law enforcement agencies and their starting salary. And you can see us being the premier law enforcement agency in the county and in the east central Florida area, and we're sixth. Law enforcement world is a very competitive place and everybody is always looking to get a new person, better person, and one of the ways they're doing that is by offering a higher starting pay. Our other major competitors for our employees are our local surrounding sheriff's office. And you can see out of that, we're sixth out of the seven counties on our starting salary. And I also got noticed this morning that Orlando Police Department, which is another big competitor of ours, just raised their starting salary to $48,000 for an entry-level police officer.
And I will tell you that not only do we lose people to those higher competing salaries, but I think the chief from the fire department would echo the same thing. They constantly lose people to Orlando Fire and Orlando Police as well as Orange County.
Our other competitive salary issue is with our dispatchers. Dispatchers are the lifeline of our deputies out there on the road, every day and every night putting their life on the line. And our dispatchers, as you can see, just within the county are two, four, six, eight out of 11. So we're having a difficult time getting the people and retaining the people because of this. They come work with us a year or two and one of the other agencies swoops in and pull them away.
They better, they better hope your dispatchers don't find out that Mako pays more than that for people saying cars.
We've actually had to start looking at, and some of the other agencies are doing it, part timing their dispatchers, allowing them to work part-time for other agencies. So just so that they can, you know, stay, keep them, keep them with their agency or keep them with our agency as best.
Our last, last two critical issues are our equipment, our facilities. Over the last several years, with the impacts of the economy on the county, we've been forced to try and come up with creative ways to replace our vehicles. And again, a deputy vehicle is the number one piece of equipment that he needs. We currently have 584 vehicles assigned to our core functions in patrol, investigations, prisoner transportation, and animal services. We used to have a five-year, 100,000-mile replacement plan six years ago. We've had to push that to, it's actually running now six to seven years and 125,000 to 140,000 miles. When we're looking at replacing a car, we really go over it and make sure it absolutely has to be done. But based on a six-year, 125, we should be replacing 80 to 90 vehicles a year. The last four years, we have only been able to replace 38, 33, 19, and this year 61. So right now, we're behind the curve about 163 vehicles that should have been replaced already. Because we're pushing the cars more years, higher mileages, we're starting to see an increase in repairs and high-mileage vehicles that are getting more costly to operate and maintain on a regular basis. I mentioned earlier transfers back to the board. In the last several years, we have come up with some creative ways to deal with our facility issues. We were overcrowded at our east precinct facility with our east precinct zone deputies and our criminal investigations. We came up with a unique way for the county to acquire the criminal investigation building over on Gus Hip and using telephone commission fees, which are fees that are generated by inmates making phone calls out of the jail. We were able to package those fees and return those to the county for the debt payment on acquiring that building. It's roughly $203,000 a year. Our north precinct facility, north precinct was housed in modular trailers at the Parkway facility at the sheriff's headquarters up in Titusville. They were originally used as the temporary six-story courthouse headquarters when the asbestos was being removed back in the early 90s. After that was done and they moved back into the six-story courthouse, we took over those, I want to say it was 1995, 1996. And our north precinct deputies were housed out of that until three years ago. The modular buildings had gotten to a point where people were getting scared to walk in there. You would walk across them and you would feel the holes. County facilities would do their very best to not go up on the roof and do any work on the air conditioning and the roof because it was so dangerous. Due to federal forfeiture funds that we came into, we came back to the county and said, we can pay for the building if you will build it, and we've been transferring our federal forfeiture dollars to make those annual debt payments for you. Our Merritt Island Airport, we built a new hangar out on Merritt Island Airport and telephone commission fees were also used to repay the county for that. And then just recently, two years ago, we did a major upgrade to the technological backbone of the agency. Our computer-aided dispatch, our records management, and our jail management, it's how the deputies get the calls dispatched to them, how we do our case reports, and how we manage and track our inmates in the jail. We were able to package some operational savings that sheriff was able to generate along with eliminating some positions within the agency by upgrading and going to New World CAD dispatch and records management. So all in all, over the last six years, we've been providing approximately $750,000 to the county for these replacements and new buildings that we desperately needed at that point in time.
And in addition to that, any time that we can, we can fill a void, for example, with the landscaping and mowing of all the county buildings and stuff, we do that with inmate labor, trying to supplement the budget as much as we possibly can so that that money can be used elsewhere throughout. And so we've, we try and come up with innovative or creative ways that we can get the needs that we have. For example, the west precinct, with the growth and expansion that Viera is currently seeing, we're busting at the seams of our west precinct. We know that there is going to become a time, as Viera continues to grow, that we're going to have to look at expanding that facility. At the same time, you have the public defender's office just immediately above us that has growth problems as well. So there are some, some capital needs that will be forthcoming and have to be a part of our strategy.
And my point for bringing that up is that we've, we've thought outside the box to come up with solutions to try and help you guys out. And to acquire the CID building and build a new north precinct and the hangar in this has not cost any taxpayer dollars. These are things that have been generated by, like I said, phone calls by inmates in the jail, seizures on a federal forfeiture level, and then additional operational savings that we've been able to make within the agency. So with that, we'll answer any questions if you guys may have.
Well, I for one appreciate the fact that you're here to point those things out. I know that the sheriff and I have talked about some of these things before, but for the general public to understand how much you guys don't cost us and how much you help the system. Anyone else? Any other?
Just like I said, it's amazing what you guys get done. I mean, with what you have, it really is. I'd like to ask you some other things, like the turnover that you're having. How much is that turnover? I mean, how often? How many people go in and out?
Well, you know, we go back to last year, in about a five or six-month window, we lost, I think it was 748 years of service to the agency because of drop retirements and things of that nature. So that in itself left a tremendous void for us to try and catch up to. And our, our career development team, our HR team's done a magnificent job at doing that. It's not that you see a constant rush of people going, it's the, it's the ones that you get. You get them in the door, you get them trained, you put that, you know, the training, the investment, everything else that we put into them, even on the correction side with, you know, getting them in academy and everything else. And then you lose them to another agency, so you're back at scratch zero. So it is a continuing problem that we face. And, you know, there have been times where you saw our numbers, what the comprehensive plan says we should have, and then what we actually are budgeted for. And we're, we're doing, our team, I tell everybody, I'm surrounded by amazing people that do great stuff. Our team's doing a great job, but when we're 20 deputies down on the road, that impacts you in other mechanisms as well, because now if somebody calls in sick, you're having to bring in somebody else for overtime, and so all of those costs continue to add up. So we've been as far as 20-plus deputies down on the road and just as many in the jail. And as I said, our team's done a great job of getting us caught up, but we know, in fact, today, I heard that one of our people is leaving to go take a job with the feds. You know, that's money that we put into training that person, because I think the person's been with us maybe two and a half years, and it takes its toll on them.
What do you see is, I mean, I know in the, in the rest of the county, there's this huge gap that keeps growing where people are taking retirement, going to retire, and you're going to lose that experience. How bad's that affecting you for the future?
Well, as I said, it hit us pretty hard in that, that one aspect of it where we lost 700-plus years of service. We, our team does, does a really good job at succession planning, not only, not only in trying to get people in, I mean, we're, we're doing something right now in partnership with Eastern Florida State College to put a larger number of people into the police academy so that we have our own group that we can, we can pull. So our team does a good job in, in getting that succession planning. And we, we not only look at it at the ranks of entry level, but also in preparing people for supervision and, and filling the, you know, your senior people are generally the ones that are up elevated in, in promotion, and so we have to look at it across the board.
That's all the guys.
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
You know, I know you said you have a high turnover. Do you find that that is like for the deputy that's hired, say, five years or less, do you find at some point it levels out to where you're more competitive as far as your pay scale goes?
It does. Ours gets a little bit more competitive the longer they've been here. Unfortunately, the people that we primarily are recruiting, the age group, if you will, is, they're, they're, what do you got for me right now? What, you know, what, what can you, you know, put, put in my pocketbook right now to, to help me? And as soon as something comes along that, that entices them a little bit more, they're apt to go. You know, we're fortunate in the aspect that we have a community that strongly supports us. We have a county commission and a county manager that strongly support us, so we, we have a great agency and our people are happy, the morale is good, they have the resources they need to do their job. So that helps us a little bit deter them leaving and going other places. But at the end of the day, the salary difference is what's causing the biggest impact for us.
Okay, thanks.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gus Rabbins.
Thank you, Greg.
I'd like to make a comment real quick. I, I think you're doing a really good job of managing your funds in your department, and I think we have the best sheriff's department in the state of Florida. And something that's kind of remarkable to me, I run into a lot of deputies and they really enjoy working for you and the people that they're under, and I just want to commend you with that. Quick question, what's the average, I know that, I'm gonna throw this hat at you, what's the average year of service per employee? I mean, do you have, most of the employees now at seven years, your average, or?
No, the majority of our employees are between the eight and 11 years right now.
Okay.
That will change over the next five years because some of our lieutenants and above, we have approximately 80 or 90 of those within the agency, and 70% of those are going to turn over.
Okay, so you have a big inventory, you're gonna have to really start filling here soon and get training going.
As the sheriff mentioned, it started last year, and I've been looking and projecting out the people that are leaving the agency over the next five years. The only ones that I can account for at this juncture, as the sheriff mentioned, are the people that come and work for us for a year or two and then go to Rockledge or go to OPD or Orange County. So when those numbers, if I could get a way to project that, then I'd be doing something really good.
So we have to do things to really keep them attracted to our area too with, with pay and, and.
And that's the biggest thing is the pay difference. And it not only impacts us in losing people, it impacts us in not being able to get them here. They're, they're being recruited by other agencies. It's a very competitive market out there. You go to the academy and everybody's trying to put their mark on the, the individual in the academy. And of course, we, we have a very solid standard. We will not ever accept mediocrity in our applicants. We want absolute best of the best, and, you know, to do that, it's, it makes it a challenge, but our team's doing it and we're getting it done.
Good. Are you able to give, and I'm getting detailed here, I'm just thinking of these questions, are you able to give some pay incentives if they achieve higher education or some things that you do in the department?
That's already included. On the law enforcement side of the equation there, the state statutes provide for education incentives for an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, up to a master's degree, and then other forms of training. It's a maximum of $120 a month.
Good. We want to keep you all safe and smart, so thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And now I would like to invite our esteemed tax collector, Ms. Lisa Cullen.
All right, I know nothing about this, so. I want to thank you for the invitation to come discuss the tax collector's budget with you. We have a little bit of a different process, so I hope I can walk you through that today. And I wanted to tell you, having watched your last budget meeting, watching you go line by line, I have some of my senior staff here with me today. We do that exercise every year, and it's, it's a very good one, it's a tough one, but it, it keeps you on track. The 177 men and women of the tax collector's office operate under the vision of transparency and accountability every day and every way. And I really believe in that, and I, I think it has gained some trust within our, our county. We have branch offices throughout the county with our administrative offices in Titusville. The majority of those are in county facilities, and I wanted to thank you for that space because it does provide a cost savings to our citizens. Tax collector revenue for fiscal year 1516, we generated 16.4, a little bit over that million dollars in revenue, and we've estimated about 16.6 for this fiscal year that we're currently in. So where do we get this funding? Our funding is generated by performing state functions at the local level. You can think of our budget much, much like your home budget. If we don't earn it, we don't spend it. But unlike your home budget, in order to spend it, I must justify it and have approval from the Department of Revenue. So one of my primary funding sources is that I am the agent for the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles. I do title and registration transactions for motor vehicles, vessels, and mobile homes. I also provide driver's license and identification card services as well as issue handicap parking placards. During the course of any given year, depending on the economy, we will process between 800,000 to a million of these types of transactions in a year. Quite a bit. We have a lot of cars in Brevard County, and a lot of people drive and all the other things that go with it. Another funding source for the office, in 2015, I partnered with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to offer concealed weapons licensing, licensing services locally. They initially told me that I would do 10 to 12 of those licenses a day in this county. We do well over 50 most days. In fact, Brevard County is number two in the state of Florida for tax collector's offices that process these types of transactions, so it has been very well received. The tax collector's office statutorily bills and collects for real intangible personal property taxes under the supervision of the Department of Revenue. These taxes are collected on behalf of 61 ad valorem districts and 38 county, municipal, and special districts. The 2016 tax roll that we're currently collecting is over $686 million. The 2016 tax roll that we're currently collecting is over $686 million, which encompasses 377, 389 parcels. I also oversee the collection and auditing of the tourist development tax. In recent years and working closely with Eric Garvey, collections have been steadily increasing. Eric and I were able to contract with Airbnb so that they collect the tourist development taxes on behalf of their hosts. And that was an innovative thing in the state of Florida. The TDC shares their knowledge of the industry with me. I don't propose to be a very knowledgeable person when it comes to the rental of hotel rooms and different facilities in Florida. But their knowledge has been extremely helpful, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate what Mr. Garvey does. It's very nice to work with. Recently, I discovered that the only place that you could purchase a birth certificate was at the Department of Health in Merritt Island. So again, I have contracted with the Department of Health, and we now offer those services at the Sarno Tax Collector Branch. They've been very popular, very well received, and we will be offering that throughout all of our branches before the end of the year. And last but not least, we act as an agent for the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. We issue hunting licenses, fishing licenses, and permits that go along with those. There's also some contractual services that I perform. These are not statutorily required. I do take the application for your county business tax receipts, and I do that at cost for you. But I've also been able to contract with the cities of Cocoa and Melbourne for lockbox processing. This provides an additional revenue stream to our office, and the cities are receiving local, low-cost water payment processing. It's been a win-win for both of us. Our budget approval and oversight is through the Department of Revenue at the tax collector's office. It is a detailed process. I've added the link to our budget workbook that we fill out and the detail and justification that they want to see with our budget each year. I can tell you that they look at the previous year's budgets to see, like if I budget for the same thing over and over, they're going to ask why it hasn't been purchased. Those types of things. So it is a thorough review by the Department of Revenue. And inside that package, you can contact them if you would like to ask them anything about our process. Our budget timetable, my budget will be due to the Department of Revenue with a copy to the Board of County Commissioners by August 1. By September 15th, I will have some type of tentative budget approval back. They will ask questions, maybe want more justification, with also a notice to the Board. They want you to know what's going on at your tax collector's office. And then between September 15th and 30th, any additional comments that I or you would like to make concerning the tax collector's office budget can be made to the Department of Revenue. And then final budget approval is noticed to me by September 30th. When we talk about my budget, I have three main buckets, I call them. Of course, the biggest bucket and the most precious asset I have are the personnel that work at the tax collector's office. You can see that that is the majority of what we pay for. Now, that number includes insurance, health insurance, any of those benefits that they would receive, worker's compensation insurance, any of those types of things that as an employer I'm required to offer to the employees. Operating expenses are a little over $2 million. I have two leased facilities. That is the majority of what we're spending there. Also, the paper, the pencils, we do like to use a lot of paper at the tax collector's office. Buy it in bulk. Those are the types of things that are covered under our operating expenses. And our capital, operating capital outlay, you can see that's pretty small. In fact, this is a kind of a large number for us because we've been replacing our high-speed processors. They were eight years old and they've come to an end of life. Now, I realize that the tax collector's office is not an island unto itself, and how I run this office affects everyone in the county. So what does this mean to you? Your ad valorem commissions were a little over $8.5 million, and I am statutorily required to return unused fees to the taxing authorities that pay those commissions. And last year, I was able to keep that at $4.7 million, for a total of $3.8 million paid, basically. And then in the non-ad valorem assessments, you can add another $989,000 for that. So those are, comes to about almost $4.7, a little under $4.8 million for the collection Since I have the oversight of hundreds of millions of dollars, it's imperative that I practice sound financial management. I am proud of the tax collector's office's financial policies and procedures. And the recognitions that I have listed are from my peers and are based on clean audits. I have not ever had an audit with any findings. And it also requires us to show continual improvements in financial operations. We handle a lot of cash. And for example, we have a cash machine that it will detect counterfeits. It counts the cash. The specialist can make drops during the day. It knows who's making the drops. And it is just a wonderful piece of equipment if you deal in the amounts of cash that we do. I have lived in Brevard County over 40 years, nearly 40 years, and I really appreciate and value what we have here. I've raised, I'm raising two children. I have a grandchild. And I know that it's my responsibility as the tax collector to do my part for Brevard County, and I can assure you that I'm doing that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board, I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to thank you for the service you're giving. It's excellent. I have, I get comments from people about the, you know, your Merritt Island office, about how quick you go through there. It used to be where people would cringe thinking they have to go to get tags or whatever. But the way it works, the way you have some like greeting, the way all of that, it's just fantastic. And so I know that's innovative in some ways, and I just really appreciate what you're doing.
Our appointment system is also another innovative thing that we've done that's been very well received. We're trying to value everyone's time as much as they value their own time. And if you want to make an appointment, you'll get in and write out.
That's great.
Yeah, I think you're doing a good job too. And I appreciate that you've made it easy to look at the financial reports too, because I've been, I just kind of enjoy looking at them. So I appreciate that a lot.
It's an interesting read if you like that stuff.
Yeah. Thank you for the easy access on that too, and so just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I can just reiterate what's already been said. Personally, I have never liked going to get tags or anything like that. So I used to charge my wife with doing that. But now I don't mind doing it because it is. You can go zip in and you can zip right out again. And as you said, if you make an appointment, it's even quicker. So having been away from the system for probably 10 or 12 years, I can tell you it was a very, very pleasant surprise when I was forced into service to have to go into one of those offices, cringing that I was going to have to go through the old system and just being thoroughly surprised, pleasantly surprised.
I love to hear that.
That I said, geez, this is okay. Is there anything, and this is a question that we should have asked the sheriff, is there anything that we can do for you that would help you besides giving you a lot more funds to operate with?
You know, we're doing, we're doing really good. When I took office in 2009, it was probably one of the roughest years I've ever worked through in my 31 at the tax collector's office because of the state of the economy and trying to talk to people who weren't able to pay their taxes, who were having those types of problems. And thankfully, we're seeing a lot of that go away. We will advertise the least amount of certificates that we ever have this year since I've become the collector. And I think that's a statement about our economy. So I'm very happy with the way it's going. We're working very well together. I'm going to miss this gentleman over here more than I can ever say. And if I could just have a more personal privilege, I would like to thank you for your help and support over these past years. It has, it has always been wonderful to work with you. When my numbers told me that I had to open an office in Viera, I called Stockton and I said, Stockton, I've got to do this. And rents in Viera are astronomical. We had looked and we had looked and we had looked, but we had finally found a place that we could rent. But I called that gentleman over there and he said, give me two weeks. And he found us space here. He made it work. He's been an awesome, dedicated servant for Brevard County, and words just can't express what I feel for you. And I'm going to miss you so, so much. But I wish you all the best in your next chapter. So we work well together. I'm Stockton, my fellow constitutional officers, we share ideas, items. It's just a pleasure.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, your fingerprints and your mark have been made. You can...
I love what I do.
The professionalism in your office is tippy-top.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Do we have our venerable clerk of court or representative? There's Mr. Ellis.
I sent you all the hard copy of our budget. It's about $2.2 million, listed all positions. The only functions we do with the Board, clerk to the Board, county's payable, and county finance. Big changes with Article 5, probably 12 years ago or so. And we shifted from where the Board used to fund a large part of the clerk's office to where the Board now funds almost nothing.
Comments from the Board?
Mr. Ellis, are you, are you experiencing a lot of turnover or you staying pretty stable with the same people coming through?
Well, in eight years, we've gone from 500 to 300 people.
Yeah, I understand, but the people that stay there, they leave. What I'm getting at is looking at, we have turnover in the county. We've got a lot of people going to elsewhere. I'm just curious how your organization is.
Well, we've not really had raises because we're under the state rule probably for eight years. When we lose people, we tend to lose them to other government agencies.
Okay.
So we lose them, particularly the state attorney's office, hiring people, more so than anywhere else. And of course, there is a turnover problem with millennials. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, okay? I've got two out of three. And millennials just have this, a job hop mentality, and there's just not much you can do about that. It's just a very different generation. So particularly with the younger people, we will see that turnover. The only people we hire that are 40 and up, we don't see that kind of turnover. But we're caught where we have, everything's gone electronic, and we need a lot of the younger people that are very savvy electronically, but they just don't do the math when they jump jobs. And I understand when you leave for a much better paying job. But when you leave for a little bit of cash and don't understand the value of the benefits, and this is a very difficult situation for all of us, is that you don't understand the value of retirement until you probably get 50. You don't understand the value of insurance until something gets messed up. So it's very hard for me to talk to someone that's 25 years old and understand that when you make $11 an hour, you got $10 an hour benefit cost. Because they don't understand the value of that benefit cost. But that is an issue that I would like to discuss with you all. And that is that we need an 8% cut in that insurance rate. We are probably the only office in the whole county that actually feels the pain on insurance. Everyone else gets some money with one hand and hands it back with the other. Because our budget is driven by the state, we get nothing for what the insurance is. And it's quite truthfully, it's killing us.
Do you have a number on that?
Our, right now, insurance, I believe, is 11.7. It's 11.7 right now. We need to knock about $1,000 a year off of that. If you all knocked $1,000 bucks a year off the insurance, at this point, everybody's submitted their budgets, you should be able to duck that money from every single agency with no pain at all. Because they've all submitted a budget based on the rate that you've got for insurance. So if you went to every single agency, you cut their insurance by $1,000 bucks a year, and you took that money back, that will give you $3 million for your roads, that will give you a million from your various enterprise funds that will have to go back to those funds. But you will pick up approximately $3 million from general funds. $1,000 per, $1,000 per year per employee. The way you bill your insurance is that we are billed the $12,000 per year per full-time employee. It does not matter whether they take the insurance or not. We haven't found another clerk's office in the state that's billing like that. It's been a 15-year struggle, all right? Evidently, after 15 years, I'm certainly not going to win that. But we can't afford that rate.
Mr. Ellis, I'm sorry, how many employees do you have? Just so I can get an idea of a budget.
Almost 300.
300. Are you, are you understaffed right now, sir? Everybody else is...
It doesn't matter whether we're understaffed or not.
I know, I'm just asking, do you...
We hang in there.
Okay.
Right? We've gone electronic. It's not even something to think about because you just get cut and you make do with what you have.
Sure. I was just wondering if you're still feeling the crunch like other departments have been saying today.
Nobody's felt the crunch that we've felt.
Okay.
I'll be very blunt. No one, no one has come before you had a 40% reduction in 10 years. We've been cut more than anybody else in the county. It's not your fault. It's not been your cut. It's mostly come down from the state. And what you find is that when you're cut, and you're cut dramatically, you are forced to find better ways to do things, and the people you work with are forced to do things better. So I can tell you, for example, in Brevard, we are all electronic, the judges are electronic, and we have to be. There are other counties where they still do paper. We can't do paper. We don't have the money to do paper. Now, I used to have probably 30 people in the file room, including a second shift. Now, there's probably six. Couldn't do paper if we wanted to. All right? If you are forced to be cut, you will be forced to find better ways to do things. And those around you will be forced to comply with what you need to do. I'm sure I have people that love to have a paper system. As I've told them, you can have a court clerk or you can have a file clerk, and they would rather have a court clerk. We put a lot of information out on the web because we have to. Nothing personal. We don't want people coming to the office. We don't want your phone call. We'll take your email. We hate to see you come in. I'd rather have you take it all for free yourself. You can pay online, you can look it up online, or we have probably, as much as 67 counties, we probably have more online than any other county. And we cannot function any other way. Have a phone center, used to have 26 people, now it's got 12. So we are forced to do things better.
The state has mandated that you...
But I can't get past this insurance.
The state has mandated that you reduce your, they force that reduction?
All the clerks are getting cut. I'll tell you my problem. When you look at my peers, Polk, Lee, Velucia, Pascoe, five of us are peers. We get $150,000 from the county, which goes towards our facilities money. Article 5. Lee, Polk, and Velucia get $1 to $2 million apiece for various things. Pascoe does too.
From the county.
From the county. Lee County, a clerk's finance, which is basically doing the, then the court's finance, and Lee County is paid for by the Board. Lee County Board pays for their child support. Velucia County Board... Volusia County Board pays for their IT. Polk County pays for their IT. And so what happens to me, when I go up in front of the state, they tell us that we're not efficient. I've got 30 to 40 less employees than all four of those counties as a full-time clerk's office. But they've got, they're paid by the board, or they're paid by the feds because the way they work their child support system over, they don't show up. They don't, they only report their state-funded employees, they don't report the total employees. And so we get beat on that every time we're up there. We won't get beat on it this time because this time, we've had it. Right? Last time I went up there, it's going to be a lot tougher this time. We have 30 to 40 less employees in all four of those counties. Because I don't have other funding sources, and I've never asked for other funding sources. I have never come to the board and asked for money. Right? Because I worked as a commissioner, I understand how Article 5 was supposed to work. In return, the board no longer gets a share of the fines and the fees and all the things that you used to get. And in fairness for that, you're not supposed to pay for the courts. All right? You still do pay for the courts, but you don't pay for us. Now, you give a lot of money to court admin, more power to you for giving it away to them. You don't have to. We don't ask for it. And we have never asked for it.
I'd like to ask, Frank, with cutting the insurance by $1,000, is that doable? Is it something to look at, or...
Commissioner, we'll be looking forward to giving you a presentation on health insurance. You know, we've done it in the past, we'll be ready to do it this time. We look at it, there was a cut a year ago of 4% because of what we did. But I don't want to spend an hour of the board's time now because I think it's going to take some time to go through it and let you know where we were, where we are, where we're going. We will be most happy to give you that presentation. And I can assure you, we will be looking at what we ought to be doing as we move forward and getting the board's direction on that as we do that.
Well, you need to discuss part of it now, or you're not going to understand what happens. All right? Last year, when you cut the rate, you did not sweep the money back from anybody you gave the insurance to. You did not sweep the money back from any of the charter officers, which you could've. All right? And that's what I'm telling you, if you cut that rate by $1,000 per person per year, it's almost $4 million. You sweep that money back, we have all submitted budgets. I've submitted a budget based on paying insurance of almost $12,000 a year. If I pay $11,000 a year and you come back and take $30,000 from my board side, it has no impact on us. All right? If you go to the sheriff and you sweep back, I don't know, 1,500 people, is that about right? 1,500 in the sheriff's office?
Yes, I think it's a little bit less than that.
Okay?
Somewhere in that range.
Somewhere in that range? All right, $1.5 million.
I don't think so.
But they budget to spend on insurance, now they don't have to pay for insurance. You can easily sweep that back with no impact to anybody you sweep it back from. It is just with your enterprise funds, you cannot move that money over to a general fund purpose. But you can do that with all your general-funded agencies.
I think you lost me. I'm a little bit more dense than other people. If you're taking, if you're saying that they've already submitted their budget...
That's right.
And their budget, they're providing for $12,000 for the individual.
Yes.
And now you're saying, "Just take $1,000 away"? How do you justify taking the $1,000? How do you cover the cost if you're taking $1,000 away?
Because you're only going to charge them $11,000. Don't charge 12, charge 11 and sweep that $1,000 per person back.
But aren't they $1,000 short on paying that person's bills?
No, not at all. If your kid comes in and wants a ticket to the show and they tell you that it's $15, you give them a $20 bill, expect to get five back. If they said the show was $10, you expect to get $10 back. You fully fund the insurance for everybody else. You put it in one pocket and they take it out and they give it back to you. They've already submitted a budget that's based on a $12,000 year insurance cost. If you pull, you cut the insurance to $11,000 bucks a year, you can sweep back $1,000 per policy from every single entity under this county board.
So, Mr. Ellis, what you're saying is the actual cost for employees, $11,000 and not $12,000?
If you did that. If you cut the rate from 12 to 11, you can sweep that money back from everybody and it has absolutely no pain felt by anybody that the money is swept from.
Okay, I'm going to take a peek at it. I think I'm starting to understand your theory a little bit. But now, I'm curious about what the cost it is to actually insure an employee. So if we're doing that and there's extra funds and you're telling me, what I'm thinking then is we're putting it into reserves for insurance because we couldn't transfer those funds anywhere else. So you're getting me thinking about some things. I'm going to have to...
You could transfer them if you wanted to. You've already transferred them. You voted a week ago to transfer them when you used that money to do your sales tax.
I know, we did that with that. But it'd have to be like, you know, we'd have to be talking about it. So I'll take a look at it.
But I want you to think about, you've got 30-something million dollars in your health insurance reserve.
Right. So I, my question...
And you've got 40-something million for annual cost.
So I'd have to ask a few questions on that. I'd have to know what statistically we need to have in reserves. My guess is what you all have been telling me about 100 days. So you're opening up some good thoughts.
Well, 100 days is great. 100 days is 12 million bucks. You've got 34.
Right. So we're going to have to take a peek at it and see what we have and what we're doing.
31.
Because, let me ask you this, we're self...
Okay. Well, after we get our 4 million, you're down to 31.
We're self-insured, and so this is just making, I'm just going to speak out what I'm thinking right now. Titus, we have a self-insured healthcare system too, and we didn't have enough in reserves. And we got kicked for a hard one year because we had a few catastrophe...
Got that.
...situations. So yeah, I'm open to looking at it.
But you're way over what you need to have in reserve.
Yeah. I don't mind looking at it, but you know, you're throwing out new accounting numbers for me here real quick. I'm going to take a peek at it.
But you're well over what you need in reserve.
But even with your department, that's a $3 million cut into it. So it's significant. I don't mind looking at it if it's there, but it's interesting.
With us, it's a quarter million dollar savings. Our board side, it's almost, it's about $30,000. But on my state side, it's well over $200,000 savings with the state side.
Let me, since I've just got you here at the mic, how does the state determine your budget and how much they're going to give you? Because I know you're telling me you're going through some battles. How do they determine for you what's appropriate?
They collect all the money up, fees, fines, someone comes in, pays a ticket, money goes up, and a part of that goes to the clerk's funds. At one point, that was 540 million. That money has declined dramatically, it's down to about 400 million or so now. That money's then divided up amongst the clerks. Now, when it's divided up, where we got pounded last time with the 15% cut was based on what they call a workload performance measure. Where they claimed that all, that Volusia County does things so much better than Brevard, so we took a big cut. Well, it turns out what Volusia County does, they've got 27 people charging the child support, and I've got eight. They're taking their reimbursement and they've got a surplus and they're putting it in their pocket. They've got almost $2 million from their county for their IT. We don't have that. They run Rocket Docket during spring break for pissing on a sidewalk and whatever else it might be. Each year, a spring break thing, open container. All right? And they classify those as misdemeanor cases. When instead, you come by, you're here for Bike Week or Spring Break or whatever, here's your citation, go over here where we've set up the shop, and you pay $100, or you come back now from Minnesota or Ohio a month from now. So how much work is involved in that? Almost zero. And so they tried to claim they had all these numbers. Well, they didn't. Well, we spent time now digging through everybody else's budget because we had to. So we've, now, we've gone through Polk, we've gone through Lee, we've gone through Volusia, we've gone through Pascoe. And that's the biggest difference, is the money they get from the board and how they count their cases. All right? And I don't care if they get their money from the board, that's just great. But don't tell us that we're less efficient when we've got more than 10% less employees than any of our peers.
Yeah, it sounds to me like you're being punished for being efficient.
But they don't see it that way because they're only looking at what the state money pays for. They're not looking at what the other money is paying for. They're not looking at the federal reimbursement on child support.
So you're going to educate them?
For any of that.
You're going to go battle for your fair share a little bit here, right?
But I'm telling you, but the insurance is breaking us.
Let me ask you a question.
Because if your insurance number here shows 12,000, for us, that's equivalent to 13,000. Because I'm paying for insurance, our office pays for insurance for people that don't take the insurance. Nobody else in the state has to do that. We have not found another county and state where insurance is billed to people that don't take it.
Do the other constitutional offices do insurance with the county also?
Yes.
Yeah. One more question.
But you fund it.
Okay.
When your insurance rate goes up, you give them more money and they give it back.
That's with the sheriff. I don't know if property appraiser and tax questioner do that also. Yeah. One more question, Mr. Ellis, just because Lisa brought hers up. Do you guys have your budget online or somewhere that we could take a peek at it too? Just because I'm interested in that stuff.
I don't care.
Do you have a place on it somewhere?
Steve?
Your budget's not online, but Mike can send...
I don't care, we can put it out there. Does that matter? Just put it out there.
You just got me arrested in your department, so...
That's fine.
Thank you.
But like I said, we've been perpetually cutting out for 10 years.
Yeah.
We can't take this insurance cost anymore. If you want money for roads, there's $3 million just sitting there that you can get on annual basis. Your surplus is that great. If you had a couple of bad years in a row, you can take the rates back up. You could not have a year bad enough to eat through that kind of reserve. You couldn't have two years bad enough to eat through that kind of reserve. I said, nobody else really cares. Maybe the enterprise funds do, but they're not going to say it. But for us, it is critical. Because I'm up, and then one thing I am up against with Volusia is our insurance is 12, 13,000, and theirs is eight or nine. And so there's not much I can do about that, other than we're outlooking at insurance again right now and possibly just pulling out of the county plan and going to something cheaper. Because at some point, we have insurance, we have employees. And it's become that big of a hit. And I don't know what the city's insurance are, if you talk to the other cities around here, I don't know. Our insurance is very expensive.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts from the commission?
I just want to make sure that we look into this because obviously, you know, Mr. Ellis isn't, didn't take on this job last year. He obviously knows what he's talking about. And I'm a little concerned if we're charging the clerk's office or any department. I don't think it's funny, but I, I'm a little concerned if we're charging any constitutional office or anybody else for people that aren't taking the insurance. We shouldn't be charging. And if it's part of our model, then maybe we need to look a little harder at that, too.
Well, I'm guessing this is cost per employee that you can do.
Yeah. Like I said, I will be happy to spend as much time as board members want. We've been doing this for a long time. We entered into, in the local agreements, which the clerk and every other charter officer participates in the program voluntarily. The clerk's office has left the program and come back because we were the best program at that time that they thought. We're trying to work with them now. I've met with Mr. Ellis, I've discussed this matter with him within the last couple of months. I've already indicated to the board that we are, you know, we constantly look at where we were. I would really appreciate the opportunity to sit down in a workshop and explain the history, where we were, where we are, where we're going. Mr. Visco and I will spend as much time and answer all the questions that you want, either on an individual basis or in a public setting. We look forward to that opportunity, but we hope we can get it.
And we've had those discussions. My point today is, everybody now has submitted budget. And so you now have the opportunity, they've not given you a paper budget yet for everybody.
They haven't submitted the budget for the coming year.
We just started.
They have not. No one has.
Mm-mm. We just started.
What did they present today?
Last year.
The current year budget. None of them have submitted it.
Is your date, and the date made first?
No.
Which date do you want the budget by?
None of us submitted it. And if we did what you did, you know, I mean, well, they're now, I don't know what they're going to do with their budget submittals. But we haven't made any commitment in that area yet, but we will be looking at it.
Great. I wish insurance wasn't so expensive. This has just creeped up on us so terribly over the last 10 years, and I don't think anybody's expecting all this. So I think we need to get creative with it and, or figure something out.
Well, I can just tell you for us, it is not sustainable.
I know, in the private sector, it's terrible out there trying to insure employees, too. It's a real crisis.
But you probably don't spend 13,000 a year on that insurance.
Yeah.
All right, something's got to give on that insurance. It would be one thing if you weren't running such a large surplus, but you are running a large surplus.
And I think each office is unique, too. Obviously, your office is a lot tougher and a lot tighter than others.
I don't know, it depends. I'm sure Road and Bridge, some of the others have had a tough time, too.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to hear from our esteemed supervisor of elections.
Oh, property appraisers already.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll hear from the esteemed Dana Blickley then.
Does that really mean I'm really esteemed or...
You are, you are esteemed. I can see the steam coming out of your ears.
While they're working on the technology, can you guys hear me? Because I can't hear myself. I'm going to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to do this. I think this is, in a public setting, has only been done once since I came into office. I could have that wrong, but I don't think so. So this gives us an opportunity to tell our story along with the public, to be able to hear what we're doing, why we're doing it, what our plans are, our measurable outcomes, our goals, and why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it. So thank you for that. We do have a budget presentation we are going to present to you, but I'd like to give you just some information about what's going on in today's market, give you an idea about what's making us churn in the property appraiser's office right now. So we are experiencing, as you've probably read, it's been reported, a low inventory of properties, higher selling prices, and higher transaction rates. So much more volatile market. Considerable drop in foreclosure and short sales of single-family homes. For those of us that have been around in this area since 2006, we can appreciate what that means for us. Higher-priced properties in Brevard are transacting at a relatively high rate. This is something that hasn't been experienced in a long time. So my reason for telling you that is, traditionally, there's a big difference between the number of lower-priced properties versus higher-priced properties that are transacting, and we are noticing quite an increase in the transaction of higher-priced properties. You know, those that are in the, you know, $600,000 range on up.
Wow.
Days on market are low, mortgage rates are low, and that obviously is increasing both transaction rate and price. Hello? We're identifying brand-new home sales, year 2016 sales from builders. We have about 25% more at this time than we did at this time last year. Early indications show average selling prices of 2016 sales, we use for assessing purposes, those that represent arms-length transactions, have gone up anywhere between 5 and 12%. And of course, that varies greatly by market area, depending upon where you are. We're using about 8% more sales, meaning 16 sales over 15 sales over last year to generate our upcoming 2017 market values. No, Scott and I do not have estimates today. So, having said that, please humor us while we tell you our story. I'm sorry, let me just say this. I want to take an opportunity again to thank Mr. Whitten for his service and his partnership in the whole property tax administration process with our office, prior to me becoming the official, and of course, as the official. Let me also say, and I'll try not to be a time burglar, there are so many things that go on behind the scenes every day with the five constitutional officers, that you just don't realize take place. And anytime there is a cooperative spirit that way, time is money, resources are money, and we are constantly looking for ways to keep those costs down. It can be anything from us having, hosting our backup servers in the sheriff's office in a location that is secure without extra cost to us. It could be furnishing satellite offices with capital that we receive from the tax collector or supervisor elections office. It could be an increase in the audit of our homestead rolls with our customers by visiting the supervisor elections office and getting information from them that leads them to our office. So, you know, I'm working with the tax collector every day, so every transaction that deals with anything to do with tangible personal property or real estate has a process where both Lisa and my hands are touching it. And in terms of Scott's office, you know, that's cyclical 365 days out of the year. So, when he talks about doing things with today's technology, you know, you can record a document at 2:00 a.m. sitting in your home or your office now, something that has changed the way that we do business. So, I appreciate their cooperation and those peers, just more than I can tell you.
Well, and we have a budget about a 14th the size of the sheriff's office, so it's going to be about a 14th amount of time to get through it here. But I'm Milo Zonk, I'm the finance director for the property appraisers' office, and just going to run you through a little bit about what we do, in case you, and you're not too familiar with it, and every time we have an opportunity and a platform, we want to tell us a little bit, folks, about what we do and why we're doing so well at it. But we do three jobs. We discover, list, and value, all property, here in Brevard County. We try to make it accurate, uniform, and equitable. That's what we do. That's all that we do. What we don't do is we don't create the value. The market creates the value. We're just trying to determine what it is, report it, and apply it fairly inequitably across the assessment role. A couple of fun facts, probably the most important fact that one of you're very much aware of. About 45% of the property in Brevard County is immune or exempt from taxation, because it's owned by the federal government, other agencies, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have about 100 employees that do the work of the office. About 70 of them are in our primary office in Titusville. Others are co-located in county facilities. We are a tenant of yours, and we appreciate that partnership. We're a full-service organization. We provide all the finance, HR, and internal support, IT to our own organization. We host our own website, at least we have, we do currently, and we contract with you all for benefits and facilities. We have a new elected official as of January 2013. She's not new, I guess, but she's, yeah, she's, but she still looks new, that's what matters.
Yeah.
But I think the important thing was, it was the first change that we had in 24 years in that office. So, there was an entirely new perspective that came in. I think you all saw maybe a little bit of the drama that came in, as we had some personality conflicts with the previous administration. We walked in, and we were left with piles of paperwork where they didn't need to be, and an empty phone, an empty office with, you know, the appraisers' office just had, I think, the soiled carpet and a phone was what was left in there. So, we had to start from the beginning, and we had to hit the ground running. We didn't have any bad habits, we didn't have any good habits, but we had to make payroll within two days, and we had to figure out how to deal with all those things, and do them as effectively as we possibly could. So, these are some of the challenges that we've had, and we're continuing to evolve with all of them, but stagnant technology. I could tell you that our green screen system, our camera system, our computer-assisted master appraisal system, which is the heart and soul of our organization, was more than 30 years old. There was a green screen system. The people that designed it are dead, the people that wrote it are dead, the people that maintained it were dying. And we needed, we needed to come up with, these are not jokes, they, like 68-year-old people creeping around our software, and they're, actually, the language that our software was written in is actually technically a dead language. If you go look at the, of the 200 or some odd computer languages that are out there, C++, you know, all those different things, Atabas Natural Language that we, that our software was written in is like 178th in popularity. They definitely don't teach it in school. So, we had our own programming support for all that. I mean, we had an infrastructure built around maintaining this software, which was also our payroll software. And when it crashed, which it did, every time they ran payroll, and I don't know why they ever did this, but it would take eight hours of a programmer just to make sure that the payroll was run accurately. That programmer's not cheap, and they shouldn't be there to maintain a payroll system. So, we took the payroll, put it into an actual payroll system, and then we went looking for an off-the-shelf camera system, which we've just finished our transition to. An efficient use of staff. We had six to seven people, as best I can tell from the old administration, were working in the support structure, the support functions that I'm in, the finance, HR, just general support to the office. We have two and a half people that do it now, and we do it really well. And so, I can tell you that we're doing as efficiently as possible. The organization itself, I mean, it's an ongoing thing. Quite frankly, we did a reorganization just this week. We consolidated two departments, which resulted in the departure of one of our senior staff. I mean, we're not afraid to continue to challenge ourselves and make sure we're doing it as efficiently as we possibly can. And it is not easy, and it is a difficult job. We know we had a budget challenge. We had to pay for change from the change. And we've done that. I mean, we financed a, an entirely new, that software system, that commercial off-the-shelf system was about $1.8 million. We didn't come to you and ask you for $1.8 million. We paid for it within our budget. The hardware that runs, that software runs on, we rebuilt our entire fleet of servers. When I say fleet, we had 24. We have two. You know, we did that, several hundred thousand dollars within our budget. We know the challenges that you all have, but we also knew the challenges that we had, because if that system failed, if that camera system failed, if people couldn't go to the website and determine, you know, what the value, see what the value was that we report, and all the transactions and all the data, that would be a failure that is not acceptable. So, we had to take those actions, and we did it within ourselves to do that. And we had to do it with our employees, because our employees were, as the sheriff said, as everybody else will tell you, we're 80% staff when it comes to our budgets. That's who we are. You know, if our employees aren't doing their jobs and doing them well and motivated to do their jobs, we're going to fail. So, we had to, and they are my customer, they're Dana's customer, all of our support services, we, our employees are our customer. So, as I talked about the camera system being old, our servers being old, we replaced all these things. We tackled the phone system, we were a little bit ahead of you all, and I know you're going through your change out now. That was just a, it was a necessity. We had to do those things, and again, we did them as cost-effectively as I believe that we could have, and got the results that we needed. So, we bought the new system, we replenished our desktops, we replenished our, our servers are all virtualized now, and gone to the VoIP for phones. So, here's the story that we can tell you. In 2006, at the last peak of the market, we had 146 employees on the payroll. Today, we have less than 100, and we're doing the same amount of work. Our budgets declined from 12 million down to 8.82 million. And again, we have things that we have to do every day. We have to go out and re-inspect one-fifth of the properties every year. We have to do those things regardless of market volumes, regardless of anything else. But as market volumes increase, that does add work to us. You know, we re-inspect sales. As subdivisions are created, we actually draw those base maps that everybody uses for GIS. We draw the map, and then everybody adds their layers to it. So, we have, we have a lot of activity-based things that complicate our lives. But here's the story that we can tell you. 2006, you could see there were about 39,000 sales and transactions. This year, we had, we saw about 37,000, 38,000. So, we're down just slightly, about 3%. But our number of exemption applications are up about 9%. And 16% of those were taken online. That's going to be a major change that we're starting to see now. And we had online applications before, but in that snazzy, you know, green screen system that we had, if you did something online, it printed something out, then we had to retype everything. Now, we have straight-through processing. Whatever you enter online, we drop it directly into our new camera system, so it's not being typed twice. We stop editing everything. Yes, sir.
What's an exemption application?
That can be for homestead, it can be for any, for a senior exemption, military, all those types of things.
Got it.
So, we are seeing an increase in those. Field checks of property, again, we have to go back and re-inspect every property every five years. And we also, we also have to inspect sales, we inspect new construction, all those things. In 2006, the office did 27,000. 2016, we did 56,000. And I'll tell you, almost 40,000 of those were using aerials and using automation. You know, we, we're trying to find the best way to add value, and if somebody's sitting at a desk and see all four sides of a property with 3-inch resolution, we're going to take advantage of that, and they're going to sit there and do 100 properties in a day, instead of driving from one to the other, the other, the other. That's an application of technology that the office had a few years ago, but they just weren't using it right. We're using it right. These are, and so, as you can see, our high count, 146 down to 102, we're down 30%. Budget's the same way, 25% lower for personnel expenses, 33% lower for operating and capital, and overall, we're about 27% down from that real estate peak. And we're not struggling today. I will tell you, our folks are working harder, they're all multitaskers. We are learning every day, as my chief deputies, as talks to the other chief deputies, and learning what's going on with other property appraiser offices, we're stealing every good idea we can find. You know, there was a time, you might walk into one of our offices, and our front counter people, they might be reading a book, because we didn't have anything else for them to do. We've got lots of things for them to do now. And so, they're working. Our Merritt Island office is virtually a data processing center as much as anything today, because they're constantly doing, moving paper for us and getting things processed. So, we are getting the best value out of our employees. So, looking forward, you know, we expect to be within about 1% from plus or minus. Right now, we're actually sitting right at no change, but we don't have all of our final numbers in, so we can give you an exact number with our, from our current budget, so we don't think, we don't, we're not going to add to your problem. But that does include, I mean, we are anticipating a pay increase for our staff. And right now, that 0% or plus or minus 1% incorporates the effects of what was, what I would call the Senate plan, that the Senate was contemplating, and I know they're still going through their process at the state, and you're still going through your process here, but we wanted to have a filler to come up with a number to at least reflect it to you. We also have, making significant investments in education and training and certification for our staff. You know, questions about turnover, that, yes, you know, we were, we are trying desperately to avoid turnover, because a GIS analyst or an IT person, I mean, we've got a lot of different specialties housed in one, in one organization. We lose one highly skilled person, it's very damaging to us. So, we are trying to make sure that they're educated, and we are also working on our transition. We have younger employees that are coming in, we're going to have employees that are retiring in the next, in the next few years, so we have a lot of certification, a lot of education that we need to drive into people as they're taking on some complex jobs. So, that also includes whatever, whatever the current FRS estimate is included in my plus or minus 1%. And we're assuming no change in health insurance. So, yes, Scott made an excellent point. If you change the health insurance at this point, that would be, you know, that's, that would, that'd be a comeback to you all. I mean, whatever you charge us for health insurance, we just turn around and charge it back. If I, if I can riff for just a second, I'm, I've been representing our office from the Insurance Benefits Committee for a couple of years, and I'm sure a couple of you know that I have, I have some concerns. You know, it is a huge expense to the county, the health plan, and it is a huge issue for competitiveness as an employer. I don't quite know how you get there from here, just to say we cut $1,000. I don't know what the status of your reserves are. I know there's some statutory requirements and some good business practice that you want to maintain. But I will say, it's been a status quo operation. I mean, other than some benefit cuts that were imposed a couple of years ago, and maybe those have or have not created the surplus you have now, I've never seen the analysis as a member of the committee, why you have a surplus. I've asked for that information, it's never been provided. I would like to make a serious recommendation to you all, that as your number-one expense outside of the salary costs, I think you'd need to put some private sector people on that insurance and benefit advisory committee. Because right now, what you have on there are 15 users. That's a fact. So, if you wonder why you have status quo, it's because there's really nobody there that's going to challenge it, because we're all afraid of what we're doing to our own benefits. And I think you need to be cognizant of that, too. Again, as an employer, you're not the best employer around these days. You're just not. You don't pay well. Your organization's a little bit challenged, and you need to have, you need to be able to show why it's a good place to work in Brevard County and the constitutional offices. It's an important benefit. But I think you need to treat it as important as it is, and give it more time, and get some more eyes on it. It really desperately needs more eyes on it. I cannot emphasize that enough. It's been a great frustration to me to watch the status quo continue, if, because if you're reading what's going on in other sectors of the industry, even in the public sector, there's a lot more innovation, there's a lot more attempt to embrace education, empower the employee to be more, more part of their, of their insurance, so that they can understand how to use it better, how to use it more cost-effectively, and ultimately, why? Why aren't you getting a pay increase this year? It's because your health plan went up $5 million, because you used it wrong last year. I mean, those things are all linked, and if you don't, if you pretend that they're not, well, that's what we've been doing the last 10 years, and that's a very, that's a big frustration. It's a huge expense for you all. I think you need to challenge that expense. It's worth more than an hour, I'll tell you that right now. It's worth a hell of a lot more than an hour. So, my riff is over. Sorry if I overstepped. But issues we've acknowledged, we need to continue to invest our employees, and technology's going to keep changing on us. We have, we are at the state of the art right now in our technology, and the state of the art's moving away from us as soon as we bought everything. And that state of the art buys us efficiency, and it buys us reliability and redundancy. So, we're going to continue to look for the state of the art, but we're also going to continue to pay for it as we go. An important element. Where we need your help, again, and I guess I kind of had a little bit of a tease in here, the employee benefits, they are an issue for us. They really are. We're chasing after highly technical people in a lot of our positions. It's a question that gets asked. And then the facilities. We have a couple of concerns about facilities. The facilities, folks, they're terrific, but they're working with 50- and 60-year-old buildings. You know, you've got entombed asbestos up in the Titusville 6-story, and everybody's afraid to even touch a little fleck of paint off the wall, let alone, you know, go in there and work every day. Again, your staff is terrific. But as you talk about infrastructure, don't forget, as an employer, as a service provider, you've got building infrastructure, and you've got human infrastructure that we encourage is equally important. So, with that, happy to take any questions.
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Devine, it looks like the homestead exemption is going to go before the voters in 2018, raising it from 50 to 75,000. My guess is voters will decide in favor of that. It looks like that deal was just cut. My question is, is, put that in real dollars. Obviously, I don't know the percentage of homesteaded properties here, you know, what's that going to mean in real dollars to our budget, I guess, in two years?
Well, right now, there's, we have about 330,000 parcels, and about 150,000 of those are homesteaded. So, we are now going to be running some estimates, well, they've already done it statewide, but we're going to be running some estimates as to what that would mean for Brevard County if those were increased, you know, from 50 to 75,000. I don't have that with me today, but you can rest assured that that goes before the voters, it will pass overwhelmingly.
Florida Association of Counties just had an estimate that I just saw come out today, and I think they were talking $9 million general fund for the county, and then another, you know, they had it broken down by county municipalities, special districts, all that stuff, so I just saw it.
Roughly nine, or?
For general fund.
Nine, but remember, that's always exponential, okay, because of the cap, so.
Can we opt out of that?
No.
No. So, all we're doing is robbing Peter to pay Paul. I mean, it just doesn't.
You know, whenever I'm asked that question, because I try to keep it very clear, that the same person that reports the value that's half of the property tax equation is not in charge of deciding what your tax rate's going to be. None of us would like that. However, I will say this, it takes five gallons to fill a five-gallon bucket. So, if your budget, in order to fund all the things that both you require to do, you call a core service, or that your constituents demand, and it takes five gallons, you know what the result of that is. Okay, there's only two parts to the property tax equation. Now, there's that pesky thing called 10-mile cap. So, what I surmise would happen is that a lot of the things that are above the line, that are ad valorem value-based, in order to fill that five-gallon bucket, will probably go below the line, and will become assessments and user fees rather than taxes. I will tell you, Dana calls them a tax.
Taxes are taxed, whether it's above or below.
That's, you know, when I pay FPNL, I don't, you know, they don't really care about what part is what, it's total bill. So, you know, you can anticipate, that goes before the voters, it will pass, and it will pass overwhelmingly. So, it's something that the county needs to be preparing for.
And that's assuming they don't create any more special categories of people that could possibly exempt.
That will continue to happen.
Yeah.
That will continue to happen. So, each session, some much more plausible than others, you will see additional exemptions being explored and passed. Very few exemptions, if you will, put before the voters, don't make it into law.
It's crazy.
Excuse my lack of education here. I remember a while ago, we had the Save Our Homes. How does that affect any of this? Is there, is there anything they're going to do different with that, or is it going to go away, or?
That's in your constitution. So, you're, I'm going to tell you that you'll have to live with that forever, but you'll probably have to live with that forever. So, yes, what has become behind Save Our Homes or Amendment 10, if you guys remember, was Amendment 1. So, once there started being a disparaging difference between what class of properties was paying for property tax revenue, behind that came additional assessment caps. So, now you have, you know, non-homesteaded residential and commercial property with a 10% cap. Okay? So everybody has a cap until there's a transaction in the market where that cap is lost, either a 3% or the CPI, whichever's less, or a 10% cap if it's non-homesteaded. So it's an exponential factor. Okay? That's why we call it a differential. It's a factored value. It's not one that the property appraiser creates. It's created at the time in which somebody files a return on a property, i.e. a personal exemption or a home set exemption application, or purchases a property and it stays with no change in title. It will realize that cap. So market value goes up 20%. Your assessed value is only going to go up 10, 3, or the CPI, whichever's less, depending upon what cap is applied on the property.
So we're going to wind up not dealing with real numbers, but artificial numbers, and you're going to have to make them work.
Well, they're not artificial, because they will be factually based, you know, starting from market, and we're going to apply the appropriate exemption and/or assessment cap and provide a taxable value. So they're going to be real numbers, but yes, they're, you know, back in the day, not that I'm old enough to remember this, but, you know, you had basically a market value, which was synonymous with just value, and if you had a homestead exemption, that was pretty much about $500, okay, savings. It's $25,000, and it was applied to all taxing districts. That is not the case anymore, okay? The case now is you have multiple types of exemptions, some applying to, you know, school taxes, some not applying to school taxes, and the property tax equation pretty much well takes one of those not preferred master degrees but required master degrees for somebody to actually get their tax bill and know if they've been bamboozled or not. I don't like that, but it's the law in which I have to work in. So, you know, I don't see any change in that. If there's anything that this office does legislatively every year, excuse my language, is to try to stop stupid stuff, okay? Very little legislation that we propose as property appraisers and as association, we spend most of our time trying to stop, you know, the obliteration of the property tax equation, not because we're trying to stop exemptions or stop assessment caps, but because it makes it increasingly difficult for property owners and taxpayers to understand their tax bills.
Very true.
And that is not in the spirit of transparency and accountability, in my humble opinion.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have our esteemed supervisor of elections.
I'd like to respectfully petition the board for the person with the smallest budget not to go last next year. Though I think we should let the sheriff go last. The person with the biggest budget goes last, right?
I agree.
Do I have a second card?
Or we could pick straws.
No, we're okay with him being last. He's not here. That's how that happens.
But he's got the gun, you know?
He's bigger than all of you, and he's got a gun.
As he likes to remind us, by the way. Thanks. Okay. And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to do this today. As Dana mentioned, it has been many years and probably, well, none of you were on the board at the last time that we did this in a public meeting. And I always appreciate a chance to really sing the praises of not only being the good budget steward that the elections office is of Brevard County taxpayer dollars, but also singing the praises of what I believe to be one of the best election teams, not only in the state of Florida, but in the nation. I wanted to start off today by doing a little snapshot, because we haven't done this in many years, from when I ran in 2008. And the Brevard County tax rolls have grown by 17% since that time, making us the ninth largest voting population in the third-largest state in the nation. And I grew up here. I've lived here my whole life, and, you know, I love that our small community town feel. But the reality is, we're a big to-do where it comes to elections. Our early voting sites, I've doubled. We've seen 100% increase in that timeframe. And from the, I see John shaking his head, and from the 2008 general to the 2016 general, it was a collective hours was a 288% increase. And as John and I were talking about recently, we saw those early voting numbers soar. But additionally, we've seen a 57% increase in mail ballots over that same timeframe. As you know, Florida has three methods of voting, and I have to be prepared for all of Brevard's 409,000 to do any one or just one of those, or all of those. In that same timeframe, and I'm really proud of this, we have, despite that 17% increase, we are working with a, I reduced the head count by 10% pretty much immediately. Our salaries have decreased 30% in that timeframe, our total budget, and 21% for our benefits, because as we've discussed, it's something that I don't have control over are the benefits, and we've seen FRS increases and obviously insurance increases over that timeframe. In addition, we have had sweeping election reform, as the commissioner knows, Commissioner Devia being recently from Tallahassee in 2013 and 2011. We had two huge election bills, or election bills in each of those years. One, the 2011 bill was 158 pages long and had 185 election law changes contained therein, and it went into law the day the governor signed it, on May 19th that year, because that was my mother's birthday, and I remember that. And we had to hit the ground running to put those in place. You know, when things like that happen, we're already in a budget year. We don't get, you know, we don't get to sit there and predict what's going. We are reactionary and we are administrator of election law. And when the budget was proposed a year before that, we didn't know that 185 changes were going to come, you know, in one bill in one year. And so those are just some of the things that we've had to accommodate, too. Just like we don't know, and it's not budgeted when a party is disbanded. We just had two, the Independent Party of Florida was disbanded in February, and I sent out 11,000 notices to voters in Brevard County that were registered members of that party who had to be moved to NPA, received new voter information cards, and given the opportunity to register with their new party, a new party. Next month, this month, the Independence Party of Florida was disbanded, and another set of notices went out with that. But in 2016, and the reason, and I apologize for this, it's not on there, Tom, and that's the reason we brought it, and I apologize, it is in your handouts, and my wonderful IT guy's going to sit and try and fix that for me. But that made Brevard County lowest cost per voter in our region. From Volusia County with the highest at 22, 25, Brevard came in at 1396 per voter. And the thing that's, I think, the additional thing that when you add to that is that we are 1,557 square miles. And I joke with some of the smaller counties that you're the size of a postage stamp, and that's the reason you can do things a little differently. We have a lot of polling locations because we have a big geographic footprint that we have to cover and accommodate and keep those polling locations and precincts regional to their area. Additionally, with 16 municipalities and special tax districts and single-member districts on the school board and county commission, all those lines have to cross. And when that happens, and as well as our legislative seats that do, we have a lot of precincts that that does, and that's something that I have to accommodate for. So our proposed budget for this year comes in benefits is a 0% increase. That said, I do want to reiterate the comments of my fellow constitutionals to say turnover in our offices is astronomically high. Sitting here, as we were discussing that, you know, I'm sitting here counting, I have seven employees in my office with more than four years' experience. And we consider four years an election cycle, because until you go through a presidential, it's not like anything else. But I will also tell you that after presidential years, when you basically have no life, if you work in the election office, we see big departure, because people don't want to make that kind of commitment of overtime for an entire year for that amount of money. And the one thing that government always had going for us was benefits. And so, you know, I've heard that run it like a business, but we don't pay like private business. And I heard the comments about millennials and job hopping. I've actually sent my staff to classes about recruiting and keeping millennials, but I don't think millennials job hop just to job hop. And I know we've got some sitting here. They job hop because they're looking for forward movement. They want to, and I have two sons that fall in that timeframe, so they're looking for forward movement. And that's hard to do when you are a small organization and then have the added responsibility of being a public servant. Because let's face it, working, being a public servant isn't like private business. It's just not. I anticipate our budget this year will be a 6% decrease from 2017 budget, and this is a number that I'm just exceedingly proud of and came across as I looked at this from the time I ran in 2008, is even though we've had a 17% increase, even though we've received numerous unfunded mandates and expansion of early voting, and the expansion of voting by mail and the postage and printing costs that go along with that, this budget is 2.37% than the budget when I ran 10 years ago. And I am very, very proud of that. And not only am I, but that really only tells part of the story, because not only am I proud of being a good fiscal keeper of our tax dollars, I'm exceedingly proud of the reputation of this office. You do not hear bad things about the Brevard County Supervisor's Office. You do not read about election problems in the newspaper. You know, the best thing for us, our reputation is when you don't read about us. And additionally, we're a bellwether. Of the 16 largest counties in the state of Florida, those 16 counties hold 72% of Florida's 12 million voters. Of those 16 large counties, Brevard is typically the highest voter turnout of any of them. And people look to us around the state, and I've had numerous people around the state tell me that. And our website traffic shows that. And I'm just really, really proud of that, and my staff, and how hard they work, and the amazing dedicated poll workers that we have that come year after year after year, because we couldn't do it without them. And with that, I'm glad to take questions.
Pleasure of the board.
I'd just like to say, I was on the canvassing board this time, and it gave me a very strong appreciation of what all's involved. I just tell you, y'all do a great job.
Thank you.
Actually, it was fun being there, too, so.
God, and we loved having you.
Yeah, it was good.
I think we all think you did a good job on our behalf this last night, too.
I always say, when you win, I've won the perfect, I've run the perfect election. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a 10-minute break? Yes, we can.
I can tell you, from my business perspective, they all want a paycheck, but they don't want to work.
Really?
They don't want to show up Friday for a paycheck, not do anything during Monday or Friday.
Okay, can we get this show on the road? We're going to have Fire and Rescue give their presentation. The floor is yours.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me? My name is Mark Scholmeyer, Fire Chief with Brevard County Fire Rescue, and we are presenting our budget today. Real quick, just looking at the programs and services that Fire Rescue funds, if you look, they're in two distinct colors. Fire Rescue is two distinct operations under one, Fire Operations and EMS. We highlighted them in blue and red to kind of separate those two, so you can see them. Underneath that, we have Support, which is IT, Admin Fleet, Logistics, and Training, which all support the operation and in general. Our agency is 32 fire and EMS stations countywide. Most of you might not know that we do countywide ALS EMS transport throughout the whole county. We also do fire suppression in our contracted cities and in the unincorporated areas as well. We have 30 ambulances countywide, 17 fire engines, five ladder trucks, 21 brush trucks. There is a typo, and I apologize. It is 20 seasonal towers and five year-round towers. We do have one hazardous materials truck and one technical rescue truck that we staff as well. We have 456 firefighters. In our E-911 dispatch center, we have 27. Fire prevention, 13, and the list goes on. Ocean Rescue, 17 full-time employees, and 100 seasonal within the season. Volunteers and reservists, an estimated 80. In our fleet, in our mechanics, we have 12. Support admin, 29. Training, 2. And our IT Division, 5. Our agency runs 73,000, almost 74,000 calls a year. We transport 51,500 patients each year with 30 ambulances. Our first responders, our engine companies, run 26,000 calls a year, almost 27,000 calls a year, and we run 3,281 fire calls a year. Ocean Rescue rescued 649 victims in 2016. They issued 74,000 swimmer warnings. We call them the school crossing guards of the beach, but they issue warnings as well. Warnings could be anywhere from, you know, get out of the beach, there's some kind of dangerous marine life, to telling people where to swim. Our inspectors, our annual inspections are about 7,000. New construction inspections are 1,300, and has come up a little bit over the course of a couple of years with the new construction going on. And then 1,800, almost 1,900 fire prevention plans reviewed. Our Fire Prevention Bureau is also tasked with community outreach. They do 249, they've reached 249 people, doing public education displays. And our training, countywide, all of our personnel, we amassed 121,500 hours of training. Here's our department revenue as a whole. We did, again, we separated the Fire Ops in red and the EMS in blue, so you can see the separation. Our Fire Operations has two distinct revenue sources, one being the Fire Service Special Assessment or the Fire Assessment, and then the second being the MSTU. On the EMS side, we have actually two distinct revenue sources as well, one of which the bulk of it is about $15.8 million in patient billing for those 51,000 transports that we have every year. And then there's also a $9.3 million general fund, of which $7.7 million goes to EMS, and the remainder goes to our Ocean Rescue program. Our expenses, as you can see, just like every other agency around, maybe even a little less, about 70% of our expenses countywide is compensation and benefits. And then the second biggest chunk is operating. That's keeping the lights on, keeping fuel in the vehicles, fixing buildings, and just keeping the operation running. A small chunk of that is capital, new fire engines, ambulances, and then $3.4 million in reserves. Looking through the years, there's two charts, kind of important. One shows the department-wide budget over the years, and if you look, it has declined from $79 million to $69 million. And if you look at the bottom chart, the reserves over that same period of time have declined as well. The reason for that is, is that we are actually using reserves for operating due to the Fire Assessment being discounted. So that's why you see that downward drop in the budget. In terms of Fire Operations, the Fire Assessment and the MSTU, it's pretty flat. The revenues have been flat over the years. There's a teeny little climb, but not a whole lot. Nothing's been happening. EMS revenue over the years, again, pretty flat, nothing really to show. Our EMS billing rates were addressed in 2009. They were increased, so you see a little bit of a rise in EMS billing. But since about 2009, we have not addressed EMS billing at all. It's remained pretty flat. Our general fund transfers remain flat, and our overall EMS budget has remained flat. Here's a breakdown of our general fund expenditures for FY '17. This is EMS and Ocean Rescue. Again, almost 75% of that is comp and benefits, and then a small portion is capital, and then $1.6 million of operating, again, keeping the lights on, fueling vehicles, and repairing One of the ways we've been able to keep costs down, so to speak, is a few initiatives. One, we have, we re-profiled our ambulances and our fire engines a couple of years back. We noticed we had a large amount of paramedics that were on the ambulances, and we, you know, in order to maintain advanced life support license, we only had to have one EMT and one paramedic on the ambulance, and in some cases, we had two. The same held true for the fire engine. So what we did was we re-profiled, restaffed. We were able to save money for, to get the union back in the step increases, and that's how we funded that with no additional money. In dispatch, we implemented a software program called ProQA or Priority Dispatch. What that does is it allows the, our dispatch center to dispatch the proper unit to the proper call. Remember, years past, you know, a fire truck and an ambulance would always show up to your house, and people go, you know, why is there so many people showing up to a stub tow? Through Priority Dispatch, through an algorithm of questions, the calls get broken down into Alpha, Bravo, Delta, and Charlie. Alpha being the least emergent, and Echo being the most, I didn't say Echo, did I? I left out Echo. Alpha through Echo, A through E. Echo being the worst, a cardiac arrest or death call. So it takes a little bit more time on the front end to actually interview the 911 caller, but on the back end of that, we are sending the correct unit to the correct call, and in some cases, we're not sending them lights and sirens, we're just sending them in or out. So we've implemented EMS, our First Responder Squad program, the stations that have ladder trucks parked with them. We have staffed a, we split the crew on the We have staffed a, we split the crew on the ladder truck, and the crew mans a smaller, it's a brush truck essentially with EMS equipment on it, and we send that to the lower acuity calls. And what that does is, it sends, it sends the smaller vehicle to the bulk of those calls, keeping the mileage off the more expensive, larger ladder trucks. Saving in tires, I mean, obviously, you know, service on a large ladder truck, it holds twice as much oil, the tires are more expensive, the service is more expensive, and the smaller brush trucks are basically pickup trucks with a bed on them, so they're a little cheap to operate. Plus, the fire trucks get about 5 to 7 miles to the gallon versus the smaller vehicles, which get almost double that. We entered into a Medicaid CPE reimbursement program. This is a pass-through from the state. Essentially, we are able to gain more money for patients that are transported that have Medicaid. This year, I believe, we are scheduled to give back, how much, Bobby? $250,000, $250,000. Next year, it'll be about $400,000. So again, it will supplement and help us out a little bit. Again, it's not on the Medicare side, it's on the Medicaid side, and we were very fortunate to be involved in that program. We entered an agreement with NAPA, which are our single-source parts supplier, which, again, eliminated dead stock on our shelves. We don't have to stock a bunch of parts that we don't normally use every day. NAPA came in, took over our parts inventory, matter of fact, bought our parts inventory from us, and they manage the parts. And in most cases, the parts are actually cheaper, and they can get them the next day or within the same day. So it works out pretty good for us. They also, with that comes a storekeeper who's in charge of administering those parts and tracking all the inventory. We do also, we have entered an agreement with Career Source Brevard. We have on-the-job training reimbursement for qualified applicants when we hire them. You know, if we hired, you know, 25 people or so, maybe four, five, or six qualified for that program, we do get money back from Career Source Brevard while they are in that training. We have instituted a Community Health Resource Program. We hired a nurse with a grant through the, yes, through a grant, and she, what she does is she handles EMS super-users. Those are people that call 911 more than three or four times a month. And again, on the hospital side, you probably know this, Commissioner, on the hospital side, hospitals will get fined for readmittance under 30 days for certain ailments. And while we don't really care about that, we are concerned about people that dial 911 multiple times for stuff that we've already transported. Sometimes we run on the same person two or three times a day. This person goes out there utilizing resources such as 211, and she's more of a patient navigator. Really don't do any medical treatment outside. So she will go out, she will find these persons the resources that they need to get by instead of calling 911, and it's worked out pretty good so far. We are looking at expanding that program even further. We just don't know exactly where we want to go with it, but she does, Tiffany, she does community education as well. She'll go out to nursing homes and the hospitals, and she talks with the patients and talks with the administrators. And, you know, nursing homes are another, nursing homes are another huge draw on our system as well, educating the staff on when to call 911, when not to call 911. So she's making strides there. Some of our challenges, aging fire and EMS stations, mold repairs, insulation, and HVAC repairs. We're on the books to spend about $600,000 this year in mostly mold abatement and moisture abatement in fire stations. Some of those projects have been completed, some of them are pending, but those are the kind of projects that we need to get on pretty quick because mold in any building, not just a fire station, over time can be very bad. We have few storm-hardened stations within the county. It seems kind of ironic that a county with 72 miles of coastline, all of our stations on the beachside are not hurricane-hardened or don't meet current wind load. We have deferred.
Excuse me. So being, that being the case, when you have an imminent storm like a Matthew, are you moving them off the beachside or are you leaving them there?
Yeah, that's a good question. A storm of that magnitude may have drawn them off the island, off the Bear Island anyway. It's those category threes, category twos, those, you know, some of our, some of those buildings out there are about 40, 40 years old or so. And like I said, they have just a, you know, a regular household, you know, commercial, not even a commercial, a residential, you know, wind protection on it. There are no hurricane-hardened windows, no braces on the doors. So we've been concerned that if we leave crews out there in a storm like Matthew, that we could probably wind up with more problems than coming up with it. Not just, not just the beachside, but also on Merritt Island. We only have one storm-hardened building on Merritt Island, too.
Is that something that you're concerned about, that maybe a policy change would have to be implemented to get those firefighters and that equipment off the island? Because you're not going out during a storm anyway to, if you have a burning fire.
Yeah, it's, what you have to do is you have to forecast a bit and estimate. In the case of Matthew, the decision to get off the barrier islands has to be done early enough that you beat the storm, because you don't want those people traveling in big, square, boxy vehicles over the causeway. So whatever has to be done, has to be done well ahead of the storm. If we had hurricane-hardened buildings on the beach, we could keep them out there a little bit longer or in storms that were a little, little less intense, but certainly, as it stands now, the buildings won't take much of a storm.
So if you lose the building, then you're going to lose the equipment inside, so.
Yeah, and we normally, yeah, we normally evacuate the equipment and take the computers with us when we do evacuate, and then when we come back, we hook everything up. We don't normally leave the equipment, the assets out there. We have this deferred construction on some fire stations. We used to have a fire station construction plan. We gave that up a couple of years ago. We do have some needs, at least on the beach side, south beaches. Our station in Barefoot Bay is a Butler Building or a Meadow Building right next to the railroad tracks. My fear is always, you know, especially with all of our Florida coming in, high-speed trains and more freight traffic coming through, I really don't want a station that close to the hazard zone. And most of our stations, or some of our stations, aren't ideally located. Way back when, when I first started, the reason why we placed a fire station somewhere wasn't necessarily ideally call volume or the center of all the call volume, it was where we could find available land, you know, where the county had land, where we could get land from, and that's where we put the fire station at. So in essence, sometimes we were traveling to the calls, you know, the calls weren't around the fire station, they were, they were miles away. So that is a challenge for us, too. Aging fleet, fire trucks and ambulances, just read something to you real quick. Our Fire Rescue ambulance snapshot, as we call it, the average age of our frontline fleet, we have 30 ambulances, is 4.8 years. Doesn't sound that bad, but we just placed three brand-new ambulances out in the field on Monday, so that dropped the number a little bit. The average age of our reserve fleet or our backup fleet is 11.2 years. The percent of the fleet 10 years or older is 19 and a half years, and the average mileage of the frontline fleet is 124,600 miles. Keeping in mind that our ambulances put anywhere between 20,000 and 40,000 miles a year on them, depending on how busy they are.
And didn't we just go through the exercise with those new ambulances? They were roughly double what they were like six, seven years ago?
Yes, yeah, they've gone up exponentially and so have fire apparatus, too. It's a good business to get into. The average age of our reserve ambulance fleet is 243,000 miles, and the average age of the entire fleet is 156. On our fire engines, our average age of our frontline fleet is 10.9 years. The average age of our reserve fleet is 15 years, and the average age of the entire fleet is 12.75 years. Average miles, mileage of our frontline fleet is about 113,000 miles, which isn't too terribly bad. But something I need to point out, though, is that on our fleet, on our fire truck fleet, most of those fire trucks were built by a company called American La France. They went out of business in 2000, they filed for bankruptcy, went out of business in 2014. The problem with that is, is that unless it's a engine or a transmission issue, all the other parts are proprietary on those units. So, you know, somewhere, somebody's holding on to these parts and charging a lot of money for them. It cost us about $3,000 or $4,000 for a windshield when one got cracked, and we had to wait about a month for it. So, you know, something as silly as door handles, body parts, all have to be either manufactured in-house or repaired to our satisfaction, or we have to hunt around the country trying to find these parts. So that is, that is a huge issue for us moving forward. And I will say that out of the 17 fire engines, the mainline fire engines, 15 of those are those American La France fire engines. Now, the good news is, is that we are getting three new fire engines this year, which will help with the fleet and will push some of those into backups, but even when they go in the reserve fleet, we still, we still have possession of them. So it's going to take some time down the road before we actually completely purge those out of our system. Again, I don't want to beat the drum, attrition in hiring costs. We lost about 66 employees. That was, that was agency-wide, that wasn't just field employees, that was, that was field and office and everybody. 66 employees in 2016, and only six of those actually retired. The rest of those went elsewhere or were terminated. The hiring cost for a typical firefighter, and that includes training and recruitment, is about $20,000 per employee. It also includes gear as well. We are losing employees, just like the Sheriff's Department through other agencies. He brought up Orlando, Florida. We lose a lot of employees to Orlando, Florida, and you're going to see here why here in a second. We also lose to Martin County, Palm Beach County. You know, people tend to go back where they live, people tend to go where the money is, and unfortunately, or fortunately, unfortunately, it's down south or west of here. One of our other challenges is labor negotiations, I'm sure you all are aware, which could impact wages in our budget. And just for a quick slide here, here's a wage comparison with Brevard County. Now, you might say, Mark, why'd you just, why'd you pick those, pick those particular agencies? Because they're more than you? Well, no, this is who we lose people to. I don't want to compare you to a Satellite Beach, I don't want to compare you to a smaller agency, I want to compare you to the places that we actually lose people to. And if you look on the bottom, Orlando, Florida is about a little $57,000, $58,000. Put this in the perspective, they're the only ones that actually pay for experience. So I could do five years here and get a bunch of training and experience and go to City of Orlando and make another couple thousand dollars more than that. So that's what the draw is. You know, Broward County, Martin County, I get it, bigger budgets, lots of money, they pay well. Osceola County, Orange County, again, Polk County, Seminole County, even Titusville pays more than us for starting firefighter, paramedic. Another challenge is reserve funds. They are diminishing. FY '17 will be at about $3.4 million level. Again, due to the Fire Assessment being discounted, 50% in 2009, we were asked to spend down in excess of reserves that we had amassed in about 2006, well, when the market was, was great. And we have done that. The problem was, the Fire Assessment was supposed to be readdressed in 2012, and it never was. Kept, get put off, put off, put off, and here we are today at a reserve level of $3.4 million. We had an audit about three years ago, four years ago, and they recommended a reserve balance equal to 60 days of operating expenses at $5.2 million. We have about 22 or 23 days in reserves for operating. Again, Fire Assessment rate has been unchanged since 2009 when it was discounted, was to be readdressed in 2012. Our EMS billing rate has not been addressed since 2009, remained unchanged. Increased service demand, especially in the south end of the county, we've experienced a large call volume in the south end, Palm Bay, Melbourne, very busy area, very populous area. And so, and also West Vieira with all the new development going on, too. Here it goes. Our department budget, again, has gone down. If you look at what it was in 2009 versus what it is today. And then our service demand, those are engine and ambulance responses over the same period of time. Service demand going up, budget going down, and the reason why the budget's going down is because of the reserve values are getting eaten up with operating. For FY '18, again, FY '18, we expect reserve balances in about the $2 million range, which is 23 days of operating. Budget includes step increases for IFF employees only. Labor negotiations may have an impact on this budget as well. In EMS, in terms of call volume, additional ambulance in the south county is needed, but the funding is not available. And the, I guess, the warning, or take it for what it's worth, the FY '19 budget, looking way ahead, balancing this budget is definitely going to be a challenge and may require additional revenue or deduction of expenses or service level impacts to make it work.
Pleasure, the board. Comments, thoughts?
I just had a quick question. You pitched, you purchased a cool truck last year, $45,000 pickup truck. Just curious, what, Ocean Rescue, what?
Yes.
What pickup truck that was?
That was just a regular pickup truck for their beach operations.
A regular $45,000 pickup truck? It sounds like a pretty good pickup truck to me.
It was a 2500 HD pickup truck, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a regular, but thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you for all you do, though, sir.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And our esteemed library group.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Thompson, I am Brevard County Library Services Director, and I am the last presentation of the evening, so I will try not to waste anyone's time. And there's our mission statement, which I think is a good one, that we enable people of all ages to improve their quality of life by providing information and enrichment through traditional resources and new technology. Here's a slide that shows the locations of our libraries and identifies the different ones we have. We have 17 libraries. We've got one very large central library, and we're, this is north to south in the category. So four large libraries, and by large, they're, they're larger than 25,000 square feet in general, and they're open on Sunday. And that would be Titusville, Cocoa Beach, Melbourne, and Franklin T. D. Group Memorial down in Palm Bay. Then we have four medium-sized libraries, and these are in the 25,000-square-foot range and would be open six days a week. Merritt Island, Suntree Vieira, Satellite Beach, and O'Gally. Then we have four small libraries. These are open usually five days, about a half-days a week, usually four hours on Saturday. That would be Port St. John, Melbourne Beach, West Melbourne, and South Mainland. And then we have four libraries that are a little bit smaller and don't have their own dedicated directors. When we lost directors back during the downturn, some libraries were, some directors had two libraries. We spent a couple of years streamlining that, so now what we have are, the satellite libraries are located geographically near a large library that can help support them, and the director of that large library is over the smaller library. So Titusville is over Mem Scott's Moore. The next one, Cape Canaveral, comes under Cocoa Beach. Dr. King Library, that's what MK stands for, is under Melbourne. And Palm Bay is a satellite of De Groot. So the directors of those four large libraries are also the directors of those satellite libraries. And just one brief comment is, when you look at that map, you see the challenge that every department in Brevard County has in providing services. We are a very long, narrow county. I wish sometimes we were a square or a rectangle, it would be so much easier, but it would not be Brevard. I'm going to fairly quickly go through our services, because I think most people understand what we do. Circulation, basically, we have over a million books in our collection, and we had four-and-a-half million checkouts, more than four-and-a-half million checkouts last year. And ebook checkouts, and this is a current figure, have reached 23,000 per month, which makes ebooks equal to the fifth-largest library in terms of volume. So ebooks have really, really become quite popular. We also have the Reference Department, which is kind of our adult services area, and that's where we provide information, help to folks. And you can see that, the numbers there, 825,000 last year, and 316,000 incidents where we helped people with computers. These folks also put on programs in the library, educational programs and cultural programs, 2,500 last year, where we had more than 36,000 attendance. And just as a side note on that, we have something very, very popular in libraries, public meeting rooms. We use these rooms and put on our own We use these rooms and put on our own programs in them, but when we're not using them, they're available for civic groups to use and nonprofits. Last year, we had 56,000 hours reserved in meeting rooms, and that's a pretty substantial increase over the previous year, and it's a 33% increase over 2009. So you can see that it's one of those areas that's really growing in demand. Here's a very important area of the library to me and to a lot of folks, and that's our youth services area. One of the ways in which we help our sheriff here in Brevard County is we help kids to read, and every kid that learns to read is hopefully one less kid that's in jail. There are some, there is some evidence that shows there is a correlation there. And certainly, the library is a haven and a great place for kids who might not have that kind of support at home. I myself recall going to the Satellite Beach Library when it first opened when I was three and a half and being read to by a librarian, so it definitely had an impact on my life. I can even remember the book she read to me. So, excuse me. So we helped quite a number of kids and their families with literacy and homework, and literacy is what it's all about. And we helped 17,000 kids with PCs or tablets, and I would just mention the tablets because we've partnered with United Way, and they have a literacy program where kids have tablets in the schools, and they, there's a software program on there that helps them to read, and then when they come to the library, they can continue using that after school. What we have also found, just coincidentally, is that kids really gravitate to the tablet and find it much easier to navigate than a PC. It's just simpler for them, and they're naturals at it. So that has worked out very well. We put on a lot of programs, and when I mentioned about going to the Satellite Beach Library as a kid, that was one of those programs even back then. And that's where we have storytime. So little kids, before they go to school even to learn to read, we have storytime where moms and dads can bring in the kids, and we'll read them a story and get them to embrace and to engage with literacy at a very early age. And we've had over 85,000 kids last year attended these programs. And I would just briefly mention that we were awarded a primetime reading grant at the O'Gally Library, and Commissioner Smith attended one of those. And it's a really nice grant, kids who might be having a little trouble reading in school, younger kids, about age eight, I believe, a group of them and their parents, they come to the library every Monday night for six weeks, and they get a meal, we have a little fellowship with them, and then we go and read a story with them, with the family there, and it's, and that goes on for six weeks. Then they're going to do it two more times, so it's a total of three sessions, that's six weeks each. And just a really great thing to see the kids and the families together with that experience and getting a love of reading and learning. And I hope you enjoyed it, I thought you did.
Well, I did, and I have to say that it encourages parents to read to their kids, because they, if they didn't know it before they got there, they understand when they do get there that their kids love to read, and it's a big deal for kids when their parents read to them. It's a big deal when I show up and do rolling readers. The kids just think it's just wonderful that some adult would come and read a book to them.
Yeah, and we partner with rolling readers for that grant, by the way, it's a great organization. Excuse me. Homebound Services, this is where we provide services to our handicapped citizens. We also do services for the blind as part of that. And there's over 2,000 citizens enrolled in this program, and I think it's actually more like 2,500. And this used to be a big program, we used to have seven people in this program before the downturn, but now we ended up with, after that, we had one person, Deborah Martin, and I just want to say what a fantastic job she's done. She's run it herself, and a couple of years ago, I think we were able to get her a little bit of part-time help and a bunch of volunteers, and they have done such a great job with this program that we, Brevard County was awarded the Sub Regional Library of the Year by the Library of Congress. We're affiliated with them for the Talking Books Program, and the main library being Daytona, we are the sub-library, but we were the one for the entire country in 2012, thanks to Deborah and her staff, really terrific group of people. And maybe just at this moment, just a quick mention of how much we rely on and really appreciate the volunteers that we get at the library. We've got more than 5,000 people who volunteered with us last year, giving us over 55,000 hours, the equivalent of 27 employees.
And I'm probably speaking to the choir, but I think all of my fellow commissioners probably had a number of people, when you were knocking on doors, say, you can cut anything, but don't cut my library. People love their libraries.
Well, I understand. I'm a child of Brevard, and I grew up with the library here, so I love it as well. And we do have something called a mobile library that was actually created, purchased by a single donor in 2006 through the Brevard Library Foundation. And we, and since 2008, it's been staffed by a single person, Tammy Moon, and she has done an amazing job operating the van, making sure it's maintained through Fleet Services, and she even personally helped refurbish it a couple of years ago when we needed to do some stuff to the interior. And so she goes out there and visits nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and things like the Girls Ranch. And so just people who cannot get to the library, she goes out there and brings, kind of like the bookmobile to them, a little bit smaller scale. And our computer folks, they are really, have done a fantastic job for us. They provide internet service for us, online and Wi-Fi, and it's a little more complicated than just like Bright House Wi-Fi. I mean, we have to protect our system, so it's not as simple as just hooking up the old router and getting online. But they have done a terrific job for us. They provide and maintain more than 800 PCs for us, for the public and staff, and they just do an amazing job. So a shout out to them and much appreciation. They keep us not on the bleeding edge, but certainly at the forefront of technology. No, I could have advanced the slide when I made that little conversation there, but okay. Okay, onto the budget. Just wanted to give you a quick slide showing our revenue, tax revenue picture for the last decade. We are, just to kind of summarize it, and things have changed a bit, but if you look at about 2010, I think we were at the $14,700,000 level, and right now, we're about $16,700,000. Basically, our budget has been pretty flat since the cutting started, and then the downturn kind of bottomed out in 2010. And since then, just like the chief said, we've had a little increase, very gradual, probably not in line with inflation, but I am not complaining. This is our adopted budget for the year we are in. You can see the bulk of our revenue is ad valorem taxes. We do receive, let's go clockwise around this baby, fines and fees. That is when people pay their overdue book fines and things like that. That's paid at each library and goes into a special fund there, which is used at that library for, you know, physical maintenance and additional books and things like that at different times. Miscellaneous revenue is interests and federal E-rates. We get a federal E-rate grant every year for our internet circuits, a statutory reduction, obviously, that's part of the law, and the balance forward. This year, we have a pretty healthy balance forward. We have been working on a backlog of maintenance, and some of those projects don't get done when we'd like them to get done. I push quite a bit to try to get as many done as quickly as possible, because every day the maintenance is further deferred, the more it costs. So in a lot of cases, that reflects my ambition to get things done last year that didn't get done last year that's getting done this year. Oops, too far. And the expense side of the equation. You can see the bulk of it, the largest expense is comp and benefits at just under $10 million. We have had a staffing plan that we instituted several years ago, which has helped us to control those costs and better support our mission and better, provide better service and safety in our libraries. Our operating expenses are the next largest expense at $4.7 million, and that is just exactly what it says, operating expenses, all the things it takes to run a library. Capital outlay, capital equipment, construction, renovation, and books. Yes, books are capital, even though they only, they don't cost a lot of money individually, they are collectively capital, and that figures into that. And as you can see, we do have, in addition to books, we are doing, as I had mentioned, a lot of maintenance, renovation, capital improvement, things that have been deferred for a number of years, since we are now in the second year of our five-year plan to get all of the libraries back up to speed in terms of their physical plant. And most of the majority of that, of the really critical stuff, has either been done or is underway this year. Next year, we have a few more items, and then we'll be moving on from there to some other things, but like roofs, air conditioning, the building envelope, these are the top items, and these are the things that we're knocking out right now. We'll be moving on to flooring, restroom renovations, and interiors after that. Transfers, some of that is some debt payments that we have from the 90s. We have several debts that we are retiring. We have six more years of debt payment on most of them, and then we have a couple, on two of them, and then on one, we have two more years, and on the ConEd debt, we have three more years. This, so basically, by about 2022, 2023 budget year, we will have retired all of our debt. So my hope is that the maintenance that we are catching up on, that once we are caught up, will be at about that point, and that will enable us to put forward a more measured and long-term maintenance plan. And reserves and contingencies, we have to maintain a certain amount of money in reserve to cover our operating during the period in which we do not get ad valorem, that's something we have to do, and so that's what that figure covers. We have two slides in quick succession, because I wasn't smart enough to put them on one slide. It's our grants, it looks sort of like Pac-Man, because most of it is the state aid to libraries grant, and I just put in there also the primetime grant, that smaller one there, and the statutory reduction, so you can see. Let's go on to the next slide, which is the same, the flip side of that, which is the expenses on the grant. So the grant from the state aid for libraries basically is in the $400,000 range, and most of that goes to operating expenses. My philosophy with that is to try to use it in a way that benefits the whole system, so a lot of that goes to our IT folks. We also buy ebooks with it, capital equipment, and of course, we do buy some books with that, which includes, I think, ebooks. And this, I just wanted to quickly just share with you, we do get, we've gotten a number of spectacular endowments in the last few years, and I just wanted to show you how much that can vary. You can't count on it, right? You know, this is money that people feel that they want to give to the libraries out of appreciation. And on the one end, over there at Titusville, you see a $1.2 million bequest that we received in the last year, which is being used to do renovations at Titusville. And then on the other end, you see Franklin T. DeGroot Library, hate to single them out, but they have an $18 endowment fund. So if they're a very, very nice library, I'm sure that will change. But you can never count on it, you know, it's a matter of what people get. And those funds also kind of vary in terms of how restricted they can be and whatnot, so it's not one size fits all. And moving on to our critical needs, you can see some of the stuff, really, a lot of these things are things that we're doing right now. The sheriff mentioned those portable buildings that they were in, that they got out of three years ago, because they were afraid to walk around. Well, we're still in one, but we're going to be replacing that this year, it's underway now. And the Titusville Library, due to that bequest, is getting major renovations, and we're doing roof repairs to Dr. King, Palm Bay, and O'Gally Libraries. And also, we will be shortly going into central library roof repairs, Satellite Beach AC repairs, and Suntree Vieira will also be getting AC repairs. We are looking at, O'Gally is going to need to have its AC replaced, and then various renovations at various libraries is the next figure. And then we have a big one, which is we want to do flooring replacements at various libraries, moving away from carpet into those vinyl planks. We have them at Merritt Island, and they're fantastic, they've been in for over 10 years, and they basically look like new, so it just makes a lot of sense. And also, we've been looking at a library self-checkout system, system-wide. It's not, it's an expensive figure, but that's because what you first have to do is get all of the books into that system. Once they're in and once it's up and running, it, year over year, it becomes very inexpensive, but that's how much it costs to get started on that. Those are our critical needs. And under trends and issues, and this is where it's wrapping up, so it's, we are very close here, folks. Infrastructure, as I said, we are in our second year of our five-year plan to catch up on deferred maintenance. And when we're complete with that, our plan is to hopefully use that retired debt money to have an ongoing plan. We do have a little bit of an issue with staff retention, as most of us do, just lack of pay increases, and we have had to resort to a larger use of part-time staff, and that does result in higher turnover. We also have always a sort of an ever-present technology demand, internet bandwidth seems to get, you know, you get more internet bandwidth and it gets used up. It's just more and more things are on the internet today, so internet bandwidth is constantly being upgraded. And we have an increasing demand for electronic materials, as we see with the ebooks. And just in a kind of a general sense, we have an increasing demand for ebooks, meeting room space, large print materials and assistive devices, we have in Aging County. But on the other end of the spectrum, we have a lot of kids who are interested in electronics and 3D printing. And local history, local history is very important, and it's becoming more important to this area as this area is maturing. And we still see a pretty healthy demand for physical books and, you know, the traditional roles of the library for providing reading and study space. So we have kind of a library system that is high-technology and old-fashioned at the same time, and I kind of think that, in a way, describes Brevard County. That's my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and how did I do on time, Vanessa?
Excellent.
Thank you. Board, thoughts?
Will the online, or the automated checkout decrease at TE?
We'll have to see, you know. We have had a test version of it going at Melbourne Beach Library for some time. It could have that effect, we have to see, you know, what the impact would be. But some people use it, and a lot of people don't, and in some places, it actually hasn't been super successful, because people want to have that personal contact. But if you're in a hurry, so. It has a lot of other benefits I didn't get into, which is that all of your materials basically are, you can track them electronically, so you can walk down the aisle with a scanner, and it'll tell you what's on the shelf and things like that, so. It has multiple benefits, but you're right, there is definitely the possibility that in terms of the circulation department, that it could have an impact there, yes, on FTEs.
Anyone else?
Jeff, you know I'm a supporter of libraries, but I have to tell you, there's, not everybody I know is a supporter. And one of the things that I hear often is, why do we need so many libraries when so much of this stuff is available online? So what would be your response?
Well, it's just that we have a lot of services, it's not simply that. And the other thing is, is not everyone can afford to have access to things. I mean, there is a lot of free stuff on the internet, but there's not a lot of free quality stuff on the internet. So if you're a person who doesn't have means, your access to these things is very, very limited.
And the library at O'Gally?
Yes, sir.
That's a very, very, very prime piece of real estate. That would bring some major, major dollars, and you could replace that library for a whole lot less, and so what are your thoughts on that?
I understand exactly what you're saying. It's a beautiful location, you can imagine a developer would love to have that location for a condominium or other usage. Eight of our libraries were city libraries before we came along as a county and consolidated them into the countywide library district. We have agreements with those cities that limit what we can do, and so what would happen is, if we stopped having a library at that location, the city of Melbourne would receive the building and the property from us, and I don't think, without compensation essentially, so we wouldn't reap anything from that particular one. There are ones that are unencumbered, they tend to be the ones that we've built since 1972, and they also tend to be actually in Brevard County, unincorporated Brevard County as opposed to a city. So it's a case-by-case basis, is what I'd have to say to look at stuff like that.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Stockton, for, been a pleasure working for you these years. Thanks, good luck.
Okay, we're going to go to public comments. Each of the speakers will have three minutes. First, we have Ron Barcher.
Thank you, commissioners, and I'm very pleased you put me on first because what I want to talk about is libraries which do provide a critical quality of life for Brevard County. And having the centrally located, having a centrally located library in the MEMS area is very important to those of us who live up there. Some of our residents, this library is, really is essential. For example, one of our residents lives about two miles from the library, and on a daily basis, he rides his bicycle. Not, he doesn't drive, he rides a bicycle to the library. He is somewhat handicapped, but, and can't really drive, but he uses that library daily to get his books and DVDs. Our community library is providing popular and educational programs for children. This past year, our MEMS library supported, provided support for 1,700 kids for the summer programs. That's a lot of kids, and this is what they, this keeps them off the street. It's very good for us, our community. Our library is currently scheduled to be rebuilt during the coming year, which we are all very thankful for. The current building consists of used trailers that you, I know you've all heard about before, crumbling used trailers. They're cobble together in 1998. They have a lifespan of 20 years. Well, it's 27 years, and we're still using them. So this building desperately needs to be replaced, and I really, really thank Jeff for being able to work it out within his budget to be able to give us that new building. So what I'm really saying is our libraries are very important, and when you're looking at finding money for roads, please don't do anything with our libraries. Thank you.
Sarah Ann Conklin.
Thank you very much. I'm Sarah Ann Conklin. I live in scenic cocoa, Florida. Some of you I'm meeting for the first time today, so welcome, and I also want to express my gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Witten, who I've worked with and been a thorn in his side for the past eight years, and he has handled it mostly very graciously, and I want to express my appreciation for that, and you still owe me a Port St. John bus, I will just say that. You have one more day in office to make that come true. I also want to just make a comment on the library presentation before I talk about the main thing I want to talk to today. About eight years ago, when Howard Tipton first came to be our county manager, one of the first conversations I had with him was, "Sarah Ann, I'm going to have to cut library hours, what do you think?" And I told him how miserable I felt about that, and how horrible it was going to be an impact on our citizens, and I still feel that way. We have not restored those library hours, and I would hope that this particular commission would have the vision to revisit that and add those hours back because we will exponentially see an increase in our community well-being if we do so. But that's not the main reason I'm here. I'm here to talk about the cut that was voted in your last meeting for the Community Action Agency. When I think, and when you think about needing assistance with rent, electricity, or medicine, do you ever think, why is it them and not me in line at the Community Action Agency? After all, we're all born with human frailty. My personal one is illness. I have a lot of illness, I have a lot of injury. Those of you who know me well know all about it, I won't bore you. But I always think, there but for the grace of God go I, when it comes to those kinds of benefits that our county provides, and I think, there but for the grace of God go all of us. As such, I think we're commanded to extend that grace whenever and in however we can in every form available to us, including the form of government. When we pray thy will be done, that will does not expire outside of government buildings. It does not expire within the walls of this room. It doesn't expire in the red ink and competing demands of a county budget. The Community Action Agency exists because private efforts, while considerable and laudable, do not fully meet the subsistence needs of our neighbors, and those private efforts never will fully meet those needs. They never will because the need is that great. So the Community Action Agency reduces and prevents suffering in the very ways we are specifically commanded to reduce and prevent suffering. I want to raise a philosophical question. Should the future of our county include everyone, including those suffering extreme material hardship? When we think of what it means to value human life, do the lives of our poorest citizens matter? I'm not saying we shouldn't care about roads. I care about roads, you all know that, I've said that in this room, and I really, really care about buses, and you've heard me say that several times in this room. But should we care more about the condition of our roads than the condition of our poorest citizens? These citizens are not aligned on a county budget. They have faces, they have children. Should the condition of our roads or the condition of our hearts be our core concern? I'm not Catholic, but I love Pope Francis. I'm a big Pope Francis fan, and he tells us that we cannot consider ourselves respectable if we pass by the suffering of our neighbors because each of us is precious in the eyes of God, and because we are, every single one of us, in every role, including that of government, called to compassion. Because all of us are inextricably tied to each other, because none of us is completely independent, because we all need each other and are commanded to care for each other, I ask you humbly to reverse the vote you took on Tuesday and restore funding to the Community Action Agency. I ask you to reconnect with that place in your own heart that acknowledges your solidarity with all of our citizens, including our most, most poor citizens, and with the will of God. Thank you all.
Jennifer Taylor. I'm assuming she's not here. Phil Stasich.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and fellow commissioners. I want to say thanks very much for what you're doing. Budget work is always hard, and I do not envy you. It's very, very hard to do what you're doing, and I thank you for doing it. I also want to say thanks to the fantastic staff that we have here in Brevard County. You've got a tremendous, watching the presentations today and working with the various staff members of our county has always been an honor and a privilege, and I have to recognize them. And again, to say thanks to Stockton for his years of service. We thank you so much, we really do, and it's a darn shame to lose you. I'm Phil Stasich, North Merritt Island, speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. I want to thank you again for all that you do for our beautiful county. Now, during the Vietnam War, the United States destroyed the city of Ben Tray. In a subsequent interview with the Associated Press, an American military officer reportedly said, "It became necessary to destroy that town in order to save it." It became necessary to destroy that town in order to save it. Now, we sincerely appreciate the desire to cut costs, but you must not destroy our county in your effort to save it. You must not pave roads on the backs of the poor, or the elderly, or our environment. Previous boards have deferred expenses and cut services to shrink our budget over the years, and it will take years to recover from this. You've heard it all, aging ambulances and fire engines breaking down, a stream of employees leaving for better pay and benefits, crumbling infrastructure, all while our population has steadily grown. Our economy has recovered. It's time to raise revenue. It's time to invest in public services and facilities. You must defend our rivers, our beaches, and our eels treasures. Cutting funds for the arts and services to pay for roads is akin to an agricultural society eating its seed stocks. They're doomed to failure, and if we do that, we are doomed to failure. Please do not destroy Brevard County in our effort to save it. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Smith, Dave Passley, Melbourne Beach, Florida. You're tired, I'm tired. Let's make it brief, get, get out of here. One thing that came to mind is when we're talking about the requirements to hire a new county manager, and I looked around the room, and I said, geez, we've got some pretty good people here working in the county, but the requirements we're putting forward would preclude them from even applying, and so I look at this and say, well, maybe we ought to maybe step back a step and take a look at what our requirements are. I think you're doing a fine job of hitting, hitting the key points, but maybe, maybe turn some of that back a little bit, the amount of experience in county government or in government and in the private sector, and education requirements. I mean, a master's degree in something that's related to government would certainly be beneficial, but I don't see how, if you had a master's degree in biology, for instance, that would do you much good. So maybe something can be amended there, but I think, I think you hit it in the right direction. I would like to see HR taking a bigger role in, in, in the process. I know a lot of people are looking at roads and saying, geez, why are we all talking about roads? Well, you need a road in front of your library. It's pretty simple. When, when all the other, when the county took a big haircut back in six, 2006, 2007, roads wound up looking like Commissioner Smith. They didn't get a haircut, he got buzzed, okay? It's time to pull it back in. It's time that if we have to do some trimming along the way to get roads the money they need, then let's get this project, project going. We cannot, I don't care what kind of mailbox you've got sitting, or garbage can with what kind of figure on it, or how, how nice your storefront sign looks. If there's a pothole in that street, it's got to be fixed. So be cognizant of the fact that, and by the way, John doesn't give me any, any kind of bonus for standing up and pitching roads and bridge, but roads and bridge are very important, and I've been through this process of looking at communities for relocating to them. And yeah, you kind of look at a park and say, that's kind of interesting, and you kind of look at a storefront, say, that's kind of interesting, but you pay a lot of attention to transportation and the roads. So if you want to make this county grow, roads is where we've got to quit, we've got to be putting some money. They're far behind, so we've got a lot of work to do. But thank you for your time, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone would have, and if you don't ask me, I'll come to your office and personally explain to you what, what we need to be doing. By the way, a budget review committee, committee is meeting again tomorrow. We're still trying to wrestle with a lot of the same issues and trying to make some recommendations to y'all. It's never easy. Budgets are never easy. But the good news is that we do have a community that is growing, we do have increased revenues coming in, let's focus those revenues where they need to be focused on the most. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council, county manager. I'll set a timer there so I don't go over three minutes. Couple things to cover real quick. How did we get this far? We've kicked that can down the road, it's kicked off the cliff, we can't even kick it anymore. We're cutting charities, 160 million backlog in roads, wasn't 10 million not enough that we kept going further and further? It's not your fault, it came before you, but now it's time for you guys to step up, be the responsible parents, and do the right thing. It's not all going to fix in one year, but it's time to change direction. Failure to do that, then it falls upon you all. I don't mean that in a bad, in a bad way, but I've, represent the fire department. I've been here for 16 years. 15 years ago, I sat there in Station 63 and was told, leave this department. You need to go somewhere that's going to take care of you. And I said, nope, Brevard County is my home, it'll come around. 16 years later, I'm sitting there looking at my employees, and I'm telling them that this next three-year contract and what's going on, and they need to decide what's going to be best for their family. Okay, it's not just starting pay, it's when it comes to topping out. I'm looking at where our 18-year employee is, what Orlando is starting pay is. So when he can only get there in 18 years, what someone is starting at elsewhere, and when you go to FRS and that's all he's going to retire at, he can't afford healthcare, he can't afford to live. So for me to tell them to stay for a county that's not going to take care of them, how is that responsible? How can I stand up for them and tell them that you guys are our leaders and you guys set the example to show that you care about your own employees? How can I sit there when they're not getting taken care of and tell them the same thing? Take care of your citizens, although you're not being taken care of. All right? Some of the numbers you saw that the chief had posted, $20,000 for each guy that leaves, that's just to hire, that's the hiring process. It's not talking about the overtime that's caused when they leave. Our positions have to be filled, all right? So when they're gone, you have to fill that position with overtime, so that's an additional cost on top of that. It's kind of, this whole county's coming to that whole broken window theory, all right? When the first house in the neighborhood starts to go and you don't pay attention to it, the next thing, it's the second and third, then nobody wants to move in that neighborhood, businesses leave, everything else follows. All right? We're at the same turnpoint here as a county. All right, there's a lot that can be done, we know the charter cap's an issue, a lot of stuff can may move below the line if possible, but it takes a four out of five vote, or four out of five, to see that it's responsible to move on, even go above that charter cap. So I appeal to y'all to be the responsible parents and know that it's time to move forward. If you're on board and you're making this county better, you're not going to lose elections. Everyone out there that I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people, they understand the dilemma you are in. All right? We stand behind you, the citizens stand behind you, it's time to move forward. Small little increments moving in the right direction is all it takes to be responsible and move forward. Thank you for your time.
Josh, I have a question for you. How long have you been with the county?
16 years.
Was it you that was telling me that somebody left here and went two counties down or one county down?
That was three minutes, sorry.
And, and they're working part-time and their benefits and they're making more money than you are with 16 years?
Actually, my new hire from two years ago, she left and she works for Boca now. So I have 16 years on, 10 years as a lieutenant fire paramedic. She started down there as a firefighter paramedic, works only 90 days, 90 shifts a year, where I work 123, and she makes more money than I do. So she works 30 less shifts than I do a year, which is 30 less, 24-hour shifts, and she makes more money than I do. And she was my new hire two years ago that I trained. So we're losing to South Florida, and that used to be our only problem with South Florida. Now, I was prepared for some stuff for you guys to see, Polk, Osceola, Seminole, Lakeland, they were behind us eight years ago. We never lost people to them. They're now far ahead of us, so we're losing to them. All right, we're losing the other cities. We just lost three to Palm Bay in the last two weeks. We've lost 12 employees since January 1st, okay? One of those was terminated. Here's what you're also not getting, when we can't recruit like we used to recruit, what do you get? The ones that do come that are worth something, all right, they're just here till they get something better. It's kind of like the sifting, all right? Once you finally get down to the sludge, and I don't mean about all of them, we have some that live, live here and they love it, but I'm also recruiting in from other places just enough to get someone to fill a seat. They're looking at going home, they don't buy into this place. They don't care about the citizens. I run calls, and I have to grab you and go, no, we don't talk to our people that way. All right? They're not here for the long, long haul, they're here temporarily to move on. That's not what you want running on your families, that's not who you want taking care of, your mom, your dad, your brothers, sisters, and neighbors. All right, and that's with BCSO, that's everybody. All right, that's, it's a county-wide problem that we're running into. All right, it's not just, I'm not here just for us. I am for all the firefighters, I've been working with these guys, I see what they do, I see 11:37 an hour for our firefighters to do that, that's just, I mean, they can't survive. They're working, my employee worked 1,500 hours overtime last year, he just made 55,000. So he worked 4,500 hours, made 55,000. That's, it's pretty sickening to me, can't even afford a house. So, because they won't, they also won't give you a loan when it's overtime. All right, so they look at that and see that, sorry, that's overtime, you can't guarantee that, so you can't have a loan, so. So that's where I'm at. One of my guys is already testing down south and breaks my heart. All right, so I'll be, two that I'll lose in two years. So I'll be, two that I'll lose in two years. And, you know, I fight for them because they're family men, you know? They want to take care of their families. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last of our public comments. Board discussion.
I'm waiting out. That's true.
She's got a pretty lot.
Have fun.
She's going to fall asleep over there, aren't you?
Yeah, there you go. Then I'm in.
Mr. Tobias.
Mr. Chair, I've got another cut list that I've provided, and just for transparency and give everyone an opportunity to look it over. I like how you did it last time where you brought it up, you know, at the beginning of the next workshop. If that works for you, I would like to go in that direction so we can have as robust conversation as possible.
Board reports. Mr. Witten.
I do have one question for the board.
You're next. You're my next, next on my list.
We're interested in, you know, we have those five missed departments that we need to bring in, and quite honestly, the next two workshops have a pretty full schedule. So I'd like to know, it seems to me, if we look at the already scheduled board meeting on the 23rd and do what we've done, May 23rd, have an afternoon, 1 o'clock. So whatever we don't get through in the next two, plus the ones from the other one, we will include that and hopefully be in a position to wrap it up that day.
Works for me. Comments from the board?
That's fine with me. I would just ask, you know, I mean, I, I think that a lot of us here probably know what many of the things that departments do, maybe just, you know, tell them or send us the stuff early so we can review it and maybe, you know, expedite some of the departments through. I mean, if everybody's okay with that, and then...
As a matter of fact, if it, you know, if it works, we all, in those departments, those five departments from the earlier workshop could be ready, if it goes through fast enough that we may not need the workshop. I just think it might be in everyone's best interest just to have it scheduled in case we do need it.
Oh, that's fine. I'm just...
And then I'll speak to the directors about trying to move the presentations along. Commissioner Pritchett.
Do we need a motion on that to schedule that?
If we do, we can get one.
Make a motion, schedule it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second. Second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Commissioner Barfield.
No report.
Commissioner Tobias.
No report.
Commissioner Isnardi.
No report.
Commissioner Smith, no report. Have a nice evening. Meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those as the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.